I'd like to call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance...
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, with the infinite justice for all.
Look, our call to roll.
Mayor Pruneroso.
Here.
Vice Mayor Javelin.
Yeah.
Councilmember Russo.
Here.
Councilmember Tinsley.
Here.
Councilmember Levy.
Here.
Before we get started tonight, just want to introduce a couple of people that are in the audience. Former Mayor Mike Partino is here tonight with us. Mike, how you doing? And former Councilwoman Annie Marie Delgado. Thank you for being here tonight. With regards to additions, deletions, modifications, there are no additions, deletions, under resolutions, Resolution 42, 2014, updating fees and charges. The City Manager has requested to withdraw Resolution 42, 2014, fees and charges until the first meeting in September, thereby giving the Rap, Parks and Recreation Advisory Board, and the PBG YAA, Palm Beach Gardens Youth Athletic Association, the opportunity to continue dialogue on this subject. Modifications, there are none. Take a vote.
To accept the deletion. Thank you.
Second.
Motion two seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pass is five zero. Next up, announcements, presentations, we have the recognition of sponsors for the Gardens Cup Golf Tournament. Charlotte.
Good evening, Council. Charlotte Presensky, Special Projects Director. This evening, we want to recognize some outstanding sponsors of the inaugural Gardens Cup. Gardens Cup was held on May 31st, and it was held on our newly renovated golf course. Hundred and twenty golfers played. It was a fabulous day, but the day could not have happened without the sponsors that we're going to recognize. As you know, that was the inaugural tournament. We're going to hold it every year, and it's an opportunity for an individual or for a team to win the Gardens Cup Championship. So it's going to be an annual event, and they're going to have their name on a plaque in our golf course. The tournament proceeds go to something very special and near and dear to the hearts of our employees. The proceeds go to the employee spirit team, and this year, we raised $10,000 for them, which is just wonderful.
Oh, awesome.
As you know, that group assists our staff, does volunteer programs, gives back to the community, and that volunteer spirit team does a tremendous job for the rest of the employees of the city. So we're very happy to have that success this year. So, tonight, we have the major sponsors with us. So to begin, our title sponsor was the Palm Beach Gardens Police Foundation. They were the first ones to step up and say they wanted to be a part of this. And I'd like to have Tom Murphy come up and represent the Palm Beach Gardens Police Foundation. And Mayor, if you can come down, we have some... Also, we have a few sponsors that are not in attendance tonight, so I will just mention their name. The Honda Classic, the Gardens Mall, and they, as you know, are always good supporters of everything they do, we do here, but they're not able to be with us. But we do have a few people attending tonight. I'd like to have Steve Matheson with the PGA Corridor Association come up. They were a gold tee sponsor. And please stay, because we're going to get one group picture. Also, I'd like to ask Kevin Dalton to come up from Unlimited Auto Wash Club. He was our lunch sponsor, and because of him, we had a fabulous lunch at the event. And lastly, of our gold tee sponsors, I'd love to have Laura Schuper come up representing the Palm Beach Gardens Wellness Team. And if possible, I'd like to invite the whole council to come down, so we can get one large group picture. We also had an abundance of whole sponsors which are recognized on our Gardens website. And I believe Mr. Murphy has a few words also.
Tom Murphy, President of the Police Foundation, for the record. The Police Foundation believes that it takes a community effort to keep our city safe, and we're very pleased and proud to support the men and women of the city government who work tirelessly every day to ensure that the city of Palm Beach Gardens is the finest place in South Florida to live, learn, work, and play. Our city employees all have a role to play in crime prevention, and they all take that role very seriously. So thank you for this certificate and this appreciation tonight, but let me turn it around and thank you for giving us the opportunity to show our appreciation to the city employees who tirelessly work in behalf of the city to make sure we keep our city very safe. We hope that you will seek our partnership in the future, and we look forward to being the sponsor of this event next year. While I'm at it, let me just make a moment, if I may, Mr. Mayor, to speak briefly about the next upcoming city event, which we are also the sponsor, which is the Gardens Night Out Against Crime, which I hope you are aware is in August the 5th here in the municipal area. The event, as you know, is being sponsored by the Police Department with the Foundation as a supporting unit. Sergeant Paul Rogers and the Foundation have been working together to put this together and make it very effective. We are looking to make it a bigger and better event than we had last year. It's always been good. We've been doing this for eighteen years. This will be the eighteenth year we're following on. We're going to make it bigger and better this year. So in addition to the exhibits and exhibitions we'll have, we'll also have a number of demonstrations of the SWAT team, the K-9 unit, the police motorcycle unit, and the crime scene unit. And thanks to some third-party donations, we'll also have some awards to give out to people from the community who help solve some of the mock crimes that we've been put on. Florida Highway Patrol, the U.S. Marshals Office, the Gardens Fire Department, National Center for Missing and Exploited Children, as well as the Gardens Mall and the downtown of the Gardens, security will all be participating with us in this event. But it won't all be business. We also expect to have funnel cakes, popcorn, and cotton candy, and all kinds of activity for children, as well as food for adults and families. So it's going to be a very fun, exciting evening out here in the backyard. So I would hope that each of you and your families and friends, along with the hundreds of community residents in the town, will participate, support the Police Foundation, support the Police Department, but most importantly, support the fact that we're driving crime out of Palm Beach Gardens and keeping it at its very low rate that it is today. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Tom. Next up, Chief Mike Sutter.
Good evening, Council. For the record, Mike Sutter, City Fire Chief. I have the privilege and the pleasure of introducing two of our folks tonight to you, that one being Firefighter of the Year and the other being Paramedic of the Year, just happened to be about the same time. And what a privilege for Palm Beach Gardens and certainly for the Fire Chief to brag about them. The first one would be Lieutenant Pierce. And Lieutenant Robert Pierce is in charge of our Explorer Group. He's done that for a number of years, and taking these children and getting them prepared. And most of them probably will be firefighters one day. And so he works diligently with them to make sure that they're staying off the streets, staying out of trouble, and doing the right thing. So if I could, bring up Lieutenant Pierce. And next, I'd like to introduce our Paramedic of the Year, and that would be Justin Ottwell. And one of the reasons he got that from the EMS providers of Palm Beach County was the fact that he went to a very difficult call. And without getting into the mechanics or the graphics of it, he was able to decisively make sure that this patient was transported in a proper way. It was actually where a gentleman had actually fallen into a hole and a tree on top of him when they were trying to replant this thing. So the difficulty in transporting this patient was not a normal transport, and the patient went and understand is doing well. So without further ado, a Paramedic of the Year, Justin Ottwell.
Good evening. For the record, Chief Steven Step, Police Department. I'd like to take a moment to recognize the Palm Beach Gardens Police Explorers for coming in first place in regional competition. So I'd like the competitors to, or Explorers, to please come to the front of the room here as I call their names. Explorer Major Kirsten Erickson, Explorer Captain Robert Artola Jr., Explorer Sergeant William Pootzback, Explorer Sergeant Landon Hopkins, Explorer Sergeant Rafael Armandares, Explorer Javier Tenenmaz, Explorer Joseph Herzog, Explorer Devante Bass, Explorer Nathan Green, and Explorer Joshua Wilkies. I believe that's everyone. And you can see the trophies that they have in place. They did a wonderful job, along with our training advisors and our police officers in the department. The 2014 Law Enforcement Challenge held at the Martin County Fairgrounds on April 12, 2014, where the post took first place overall for the entire event. Our post also won first place in the categories of active shooter, felony high-risk traffic stops, traffic stops, and domestic crisis intervention. Also, second place in standardized field sobriety, and they also placed in building searches, mock disaster, and the airsoft rifle course. So they did a phenomenal job. They showed Palm Beach Gardens well, and we look forward to some of them becoming police officers in the future. In the meantime, they're out there with the community on a regular basis and couldn't be more proud of the work they do. I'd also like, actually, for the picture, let's have all of our Explorers in the audience come up, along with our training advisors. We have Sergeant Rogers here. Anderson, come on up also. Kind of oversees the entire division there. Sergeant Rogers, Officer Federencheck, Officer Sharon, I believe, in the audience, and Officer Barrera. I think that just about covers everyone. These officers dedicate their own time to train our Explorers to accomplish what they do.
Mayor, Council, please.
Mayor, can we get a quick photo with that? You got some big ones there. There you go. As everyone's working their way back to their seats, I'd like Major Kirsten Erickson to stay behind for a second. Mayor, if you can hang behind for a moment. Just as a follow-up, Kirsten has recently been promoted to Major. So of all the Explorers, she is the highest-ranking Explorer that we've ever had, to my knowledge. And so she was recently promoted, but I don't know if she's been notified or not, but she also has been awarded Volunteer of the First Quarter. Not only does she have a job on the side and work as our Explorer Major volunteering, but she's involved in the joy drive. She goes out on ride-alongs with our officers and helps the officers out on the street, calming victims, and just does an amazing job. So I'd like, Mayor, if you'd like to present her with Volunteer of the Quarter. And it doesn't end there. She's about to go off to college, to FSU, where she's going to major in psychology and criminal justice, and hopefully she'll come back to work for the city someday. And also, she just got picked up for an internship by the National Center for Missing and Exploited Children. So we're expecting really big things from her, and we're very proud of you.
Allison.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Allison Black, Planning and Zoning, for the record. This evening, I have the opportunity to bring to you Project Opalai. They are looking to do an economic development incentive grant from the city for 10% of the qualified targeted expedited permitting. Also in attendance this evening is Gary Hines from the Business Development Board, as well as Bill Forhan, who is the CEO of the company. Should you have any questions at the end of the presentation. To give you a little background, the Business Development Board approached the city, asking for areas for relocation for our national corporate headquarters in their area. Project Opalai is a leading provider of medically managed services in providing urine drug toxology, as well as comprehensive pain management. The company is also considering two other locations in Palm Beach County, as well as two other areas outside the state, which is Denver and Atlanta. So they are still looking at other, or they do have possibilities outside of the city of Palm Beach Gardens. They did apply for the state's qualified targeted incentive program, which they are asking a total of $360,000. In order to qualify for that program with the state, they must have a 20% local match from the municipalities and the counties that they are looking to move into. So therefore, Palm Beach County is going to be looking at voting on July 22nd for $36,000, and they are asking the city of Palm Beach Gardens for an incentive grant of $36,000 as well. This incentive grant would add 60 new jobs with an average salary of $75,000 to the city of Palm Beach Gardens. And because this is a national corporate headquarters, it would be administrative and executive-level positions. They're committing to phasing of the jobs with the qualified targeted incentive. It would be in three years. The first year, they would add 15 jobs, second year 20, and the third year 25, for a total of 60 jobs by the end of 2016. The economic projections, and this is for Palm Beach County, would be an output directly of $16 million, with a total output of $30 million in the county. And you can see here that their company average wage of $75,000 is 159% higher than what our current average wage for the county would, is $47,000. With this resolution, there's conditions of approval. The company must receive additional funding from Palm Beach County, which I said is voting in the second meeting in July, and the state of Florida. They must actually move into the city of Palm Beach Gardens. And the $36,000 local match will be made in accordance with the Department of Economic Opportunity. So as they, once they receive the qualified targeted incentive program after the year, they will then ask the city for the money over the next three years. Staff has reviewed the information submitted by the company and supports the request, and we are also recommending approval of Resolution 45, 2014. If you have any questions, we're here, Ms. Thank you.
Any questions for Allison? Can you just talk about the funding mechanism again? After they meet their job allegations for each year, do they get a third of the monies? Is that how we're allocating it?
It's 10%.
10%.
So when they go to the state with the 15 jobs, they're allocated so much by the state, and then we have to give 10%. The county gives 10%.
Gotcha.
And that's the total, 20%.
Okay.
But in order to actually get the qualified tax incentive, they have to show that they have the support from the municipalities, as well as the county.
Gotcha. Okay, so three years, the money will be out the door, the jobs will be here.
Over those three years, correct, in the phase.
Thank you very much. Any other questions for Alice? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Let's move on to items of resident interest for committee reports, and we'll start with David.
Well, I think we just saw a good reason why you want to locate the Palm Beach Gardens. We have the best fire and police department in the United States of America. Before you guys leave, you know, this is, we take it for granted that you guys keep winning awards. But what I don't think a lot of people realize is a lot of these teams are counties, cities like Tampa, Fort Lauderdale, and Miami. And the city of Palm Beach Gardens with 50,000 people are beating them. So I want to really give my hats off to you and your mentors. I mean, what a great job you guys have done. It really is fantastic. We're really proud of you. And our firefighter, okay, you guys can go. And our firefighters also are the best. You know, one of the very few accredited departments in the state of Florida, the United States, and the only one in the county. And now we have the Firefighter of the Year and the Paramedic of the Year. That's like a royal flush. So you guys have done a great job, too. And I'll tell you, that's the reason why you want to be in Palm Beach Gardens, besides the great quality of life and the great recreation and everything else. You got the protection, and that's something you can tell future employees, too. And we'll go into education, all our A-Rate schools at another meeting, but it's just a great place to live in. I just, you know, it's funny, as I see these awards, I'm getting so darn used to them. You know, Ron, your staff keeps coming up with new awards to be won. I keep getting used to it. You know, if I was sitting on the City Council of another city, I don't think I'd be seeing an award every council meeting. So I think we just really need to focus on what's going on in this city and really be appreciative. So anyway, on to other things. I did attend the League of Cities Meeting, Florida League of Cities Meeting, which was held in Royal Palm Beach. Exciting. The next League of Cities Meeting is going to be held in Juneau Beach at the Florida Power and Light Facility. So it's actually going to be near us. So if you want to attend, it starts at 12:00. Lunch is served, but do make a reservation, because Florida Power and Light needs to get you cleared through security. On other league business, Steve Wilson of the city of Belgrade, Susan Haney of Boca Raton, and Scott Maxwell of Lake Worth were appointed our representatives to the Florida League of Cities Board of Directors. And since two of them are actually running for higher office, one is running for second director, second vice president of the Florida League of Cities, and one is running for second vice president of the U.S. League of Cities, we also appointed Lisa Tropepe of Palm Beach Shores as an alternate should one of them win. So also, I attended the Locksahatchee River Management Coordinating Council meeting. And why it's most interesting to us is that at the council meeting, they had a presentation from Avenir. And of course, the proposal for Avenir is important to the coordinating council because of the water supply issues to the Locksahatchee River and how Avenir can be part of that. Of course, I didn't make any comments, because this council has the final say. I will tell you that there were a lot of questions asked about the delivery of the water, and also, which we did not get answers, how many units were actually going to be built, what the impervious surface was, and we weren't going to get any answers to that. I think that they will come back at a later date and probably give a further presentation. I will report back to this council what the coordinating council says. Also, we went over, and you always love these reports, right? We also went over some proposed changes to the Langhart Dam and the Maston Dam. Only in the city of Palm Beach Gardens will you get, you know, the discussion on dams. So they're talking about actually redoing the portage ramps to make them compliant with the Americans with Disabilities Act. So with that, I'll pass it on to you, Marcy.
Well, thank you, and I concur with your congratulations and comments in regards to all of the wonderful things our staff has done.
About the dams?
Not about the dams. I'll try to be very quick. I do have my typical list, and I had this month the privilege, excuse me, of welcoming our guests this year at the Fire Prevention Conference, which our city hosted. That was a great event. I met with a few leaders in the business community in Chamber in regards to an education initiative I'm working on. I've received wonderful input, and I will be putting an outline together and then bringing it back up for discussion in the future. I also attended the State of Chamber Breakfast, where the Chamber introduced their new chairman, Nat Mason, and thanked their past leaders for their hard work and dedication. Don Haring was one of them. I attended the Treasure Coast Regional Planning Council, where I learned that the state, this is interesting, is working on a strategy for freight and is planning a workshop in the near future. Further, they're working on a freight strategy discussion at the next Treasure Coast Planning Council Meeting, where they're going to be discussing forecasts and goals in a holistic view of cargo, freight networks, which obviously has a lot to do with the port and also all board Florida, and other venues as well. I attended the Rec Advisory Board Meeting, where we invited the PBG YAA to attend to discuss issues related to our fields overcrowding, maintenance, and how to cooperatively come up with solutions. Many great ideas were discussed and exchanged. It was a very productive meeting. We discussed raising fees, but not to the detail, and which was depicted in Resolution 42, so I'm very appreciative that it's been pulled off the agenda, because now we have an opportunity to discuss it at our next meeting, which is going to be on the 21st. We concluded that we need to communicate a little bit better together, and that therefore we'd like to do a joint meeting again, and more often, because it was very productive. We all realized at the meeting how little staff we have for the recreation and how hard they really work, and they do a great job. For everything that they've accomplished, they really have a lot of many tasks that they do for us, and I commend them all and thank them for all of their hard work and dedication. We also concluded, of course, that we all know, that we need more fields and place space, because our parks are very successful. Everyone is competing for the same fields, which we all know. No one wants us to shut down the fields for resting, resting of the fields for maintenance. We all have busy schedules and a lot of competition, so that's a hard thing to do. Finally, in regards to that, I met with Hal Valashay, actually twice, in regards to the city Central Park, we'll just call it Central Park, the one on Central Boulevard, for now. Good news and bad news. We have, the good news is that, or I'll tell you the bad news first. The bad news is that they have no money to build the park, but they really understand and agree that it is needed, and they want to work with us to provide the park, and we can do it in many different ways. They'll probably be asking voters for funding for other parks and could add this one on their initiative, their valid initiative, if possible, or if that's something that we feel is necessary. The land has to stay in the county's ownership, because they feel they need it for their planned park needs. That was one of the things that they had said. Nonetheless, they are willing to consider options in regards to that park, whether it be long-term lease, whether it be building it and turning it over to us, whether it be building it and running it. There are all kinds of options, and possibly we can workshop and discuss it in the future. We don't have to discuss it now. We don't have to discuss it now. I also attended the P&amp;Z workshop last night, which was very well-attended. I liked Councilman John Callahan's comments in regards to the, his ideas of the project, which was quite interesting, which was using TBRs. And last, I attended the North County Economic Development Advisory Board, and I'm sure Joe will talk about that more.
Was that the brief list?
That was the brief list.
Okay, just wanted to make sure. Don't want to see you to miss anything there.
I'd like to personally thank Marcy for letting me talk about something.
Yeah, you should see the expanded list.
Marcy, the one thing is, did you share with Commissioner Valache the amount of county residents that we're servicing?
Absolutely. We, I actually had all the numbers. Staff had given me all of the non-resident, resident numbers.
Because if we don't get the parks space, you know, right now, the issue is what they're going to pay to use our parks. But before long, they won't be able to use them if we don't have the space.
I understand, and they understand too. And they felt that they, they agree and they really feel that that piece of property shouldn't be a district park.
Anyway, getting back to the economic, great job with that, by the way. Today, both myself and, and Marcy attended the North County Economic Development Advisory Board meeting, and we had a presentation by the port of the dredging that they're going to do, and I guess they're trying to get this done, and I guess the town of Palm Beach is fighting them, and Congressman Frankel is fighting them. They sort of explained to us why this needs to be done. It's part safety and it's maybe more safety and to make sure that the port runs properly. We also found out, and something that I found very interesting, the cheapest mode of transportation is by water. That's amazing. We know it may not be the quickest, but if you're going to ship something from here to North Florida, the cheapest way is to ship it by water. The port will not become what many are afraid it's going to become because of the expansion of the Panama Canal. Yes, Port of Miami, Everglades, that may wind up growing, but it's not, ours is not going to grow any significant more. But it was a great presentation and I wish they would do it in more locations. The great news for us, and it explained to us how many jobs were created by this port and why it's such a, it's like a hidden asset of North Palm Beach County or Palm Beach County, because it's something that nobody really pays a lot of attention to, but brings us significant economic impact. So it's very important to make sure that it stays functional and successful. The other thing I brought up at the meeting, and then many of us have been reading the papers, I guess, for the last month regarding Scripps, and I personally have not been very happy. I've had a few discussions with former Commissioner Marcus, who was, in effect, I believe is a PR person for some type of relationship. She works for Scripps at this point. And the bottom line is, is that all of this that's going on in the newspaper doesn't help us in recruiting companies. If you're going to come to this area, we thought, once we got Max Blanc having Scripps and Max Blanc, you know, we're on our way. Now I don't think we're on our way anymore because now they're talking about, but the good news was, he said Scripps didn't have a problem with money for five years. Well, that's not great when you consider companies are going to locate here, locating here for four more than five years. They're looking 50 years down the line. So hopefully, we did have a discussion today, and it's just, it has to be a focus of all of us. You know what we want through to get Scripps here, and you know what Governor Bush did to make sure that it was going to be successful, and now it seems like it could be on a collision course. The worst thing I see about it is you got the scientists and an uproar, and if you start losing scientists, you know, like I've always said before, the biggest asset we have in the city of Palm Beach Gardens and the buildings, the parks, it's the staff we have. Well, that's the same thing with Scripps. You start losing those world-class scientists, it's going to be a disaster. But I also will tell you that Scripps Florida is profitable and has met well its goals. But the fear I have is we need to locate companies here. We're not going to locate them if they start reading our newspapers. So we got to focus on getting this done and, like I said, I spoke with Commissioner Marcus and I'll be speaking with her again. I also plan to speak to Commissioner Valache because we need to get on top of this issue before it becomes a disaster for all of us. So that's all I have. Thank you. What's that? Oh, I thought I said, and Honda Classic, as we all know, gives a significant amount of dollars. This year, the number was over 2.5, I believe it was 2.55, to local charities. That's a significant number. Like I said to you, like I've said many times, that's another hidden asset. We have this, this classic comes to town, it provides us with economic impact, money for our businesses, and at the end of the day, so much of the dollars go to charities. When you think you can have an event for four days here in the city and give over 2.5 million dollars to local charities, that's a win-win. We're fortunate to have it. They do a great job, like we were just talking before, how much they support everything in the city. I'm also a part of it, serving on their board, and I'm proud of what they've done and what they've grown this event to. Remember, a few years back, they were given less than a million dollars, so it's significant. So, thank you.
Thanks, Joe. Eric?
Well, I'm glad you mentioned something about Scripps. I too have spoken to Commissioner Marcus. I'm very concerned, I think we all are. Obviously, this thing gets out and, you know, they rely a lot on fundraising for their, for their budget every year, and they have some heavy hitters here in the Palm Beach Gardens and Palm Beach area. And, you know, they look at this and they say, well, am I going to continue to contribute? So that can have a snowball effect. We had a conversation about that. So I know you're working with her, and we will all work with her in order to try and make this not happen. You know, we want to keep Scripps here. That's, that's the bottom line. Marcy, thank you for, for the whole list you made because usually, when it gets to me, I have nothing to say. But I just wanted to say a few words about a trip I took. I took a vacation this year, and it was a big one. I went to Europe, I went to England, and I went to France, northern France. It was a really wonderful trip, but I just wanted to mention the highlight of the trip. The highlight of the trip was when we went to Normandy. This is 70th anniversary of the landing on the beaches in Normandy in 1944. Doesn't matter what year it is, when you go to those beaches and you see the incredible obstacles that these kids, and they were kids, you know, a lot of them 18, 19, 20, 22-year-old kids, accomplished in this incredible feat of bravery. You just, you know, you feel so small. And I stood there on Omaha Beach for quite a while, looking around and examining the cliffs above and the embankments and the, and the guns above the beaches, and I'm in absolute awe of what these kids accomplished. And I visited the semitaries, and it's just a very moving experience, and if any of you ever get a chance to go, I recommend you do because to pay tribute to those kids who did that incredible, incredible feat of bravery is, is an honor to be able to be there, just. So I just want to share that with you. It was a great trip and I'm happy to be home. I really am. Thank you.
Eric, so is the USC thing done with Scripps? They're not doing merger now, are they?
Yeah, from, you know, we'll never really know if it's done, but from what they've said and where it's at, it's basically done at this point. But as we all know, the problem isn't just USC. The problem is what they said and are they going to still be looking for a partner? Somebody made the comment today, if Stanford came knocking on the door, they'd probably do a deal with Stanford, you know? So that's, you know, there's many options that can happen here, even splitting Scripps off from California, because Scripps Florida isn't the issue. It's La Jolla and what they have there and what's going on there, from what I understand. We never really know. But the sad part is, is everything I read, everything I hear, everything I see, is the head of Scripps, Dr. Marletta, right? Marletta, doesn't seem to be in a good position. He's the leader and everybody below him seems to have lost faith in him. So that's, they got a lot of issues to address. Hopefully, in the next two or three months, it will. I also spoke to Sean from the Business Development Board, and he said that up to this point, it hasn't been an issue. But if, I honestly believe if there was another company out there similar to Max Blanc that was going to locate here, they wouldn't do it. Unfortunately, there's been a big falloff since Dr. Lerner has retired from his position there, and it's a whole different, a whole different situation. You know, when he was there, they were getting a lot of money from drug companies to do different things, and that seems to be not there anymore.
We're also getting a lot of money from NIH, which has been drying up all of the year.
Yeah, but they're, they're still getting that. The good news is that they're getting a significant, you know, the biggest asset, the reason why they came here, let's face it, they came here for the philanthropy.
Yeah.
I mean, they knew the scientists would love to work here, but the bottom line is, is the money that could be raised in this area, which it has been, is why they're here. And so we just need to, with that, you know, keep that going and so forth. It's just, we just need to get through this rough patch. I believe that it will get worked out, but I also said that we're going to have to call Governor Scott, we're going to have to, I mean, we're going to have to get involved here. Commissioner Valache, I mean, I mean, she told me that, Commissioner Marcus had told me that they called Mayor Taylor, they're keeping her abreast of the thing, but I don't read the other side of things, you know? I don't read the good side of things, and that's what we really need to be doing because we need to be promoting this area for biotech. We got brigger coming out of the ground, we got everything else crashing, so, anyway.
All right, well, yeah, I'd like to add, for the month of July here in our city is always a great, great time as far as athletics with all the baseball tournaments that are going on. Last weekend, 4th of July weekend, we had the Rookie State Tournament for Cal Ripken, which had about 48 teams, 42 from out of the area. About 600 families have the pleasure of visiting our city for a good five days. This weekend, you'll see the fields active again with the 12-year-old state tournament, the state of Florida with about 12 to 13 teams from out of the area visiting here for a week. And then in two weeks, you'll see the nine-year-old Southeast Regional Baseball Tournament where we have teams from eight states, the Southeast United States, come and visit. So if you look at our city over the next month or the month of July, we have between, anywhere between 700 and 800 families out of town visiting our city for a good week, and we're thankful to host those tournaments and we're, and I'm very thankful for the Parks Department that we have and the effort that they give to keep those games running one after another, to get them through, especially all this rain that we've had, to get those things done on time and keep the tournaments moving forward. So just a kudos to the Parks Department. I think I do this every year, but the appreciation I have for them and the things that they do to keep these tournaments top-notch and allows us to bid every year and get these families back here from out of the area to visit and truly visit our city and our vendors and the hotels and the mall, and it's just, it's exciting to have these people here. So I'm very thankful for what they do and how they represent our city. It's very well-received, and I think if half the families that visit could move here, they would. So it's a great compliment to our city and the Parks guys that are out there working day and night, so thank you. And that's all I have. We're going to skip the city manager report for tonight and go to comments by the public, not on the agenda tonight, and we'll start with Steve Matheson.
I'm here tonight, Steve Matheson for the record. I'm here tonight on behalf of the PGA Corridor Association. We want to thank you for the recognition regarding the golf tournament. More importantly, we know that you share our commitment to the future of this city, and we're going to be here for you for this tournament, for many other things in the future. My board asked me to come tonight and speak briefly regarding the LDR amendments that are being processed and proposed by your staff. It's not here to complain, it's here to say thank you because instead of coming at the last moment with concerns and reacting, so to speak, we're going to be working with staff in a collaborative way as a business community, hopefully come to you at the end of the process, which we may, may finish in August, December, this October perhaps. And that type of professionalism at the staff level, the growth management, attorney's office, your city manager's office, is greatly appreciated by us as a business community. So we want to thank you for that, for your collaborative work with us as opposed to having to try and react to things just coming out of nowhere. We appreciate it, we support your efforts, and we will be here for you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Steve Martino?
Before you start my clock, I do have some, some comments that I'd like to make, but I also have some, some visuals that go along with them, so I'd like to give those to you guys.
Okay.
And then to the clerk, for the record, if you don't mind. Thank you. Again, good evening, Mayor Permosto, members of the city council. For the record, my name is Steve Martino. I reside at 3240 Meridian Way South in Palm Beach Gardens. I come before you tonight as a native of Palm Beach County, proudly raised in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. I've been educated in all three of the original schools in Palm Beach Gardens, Gardens Elementary, Howard Watkins, and of course, a proud graduate of Palm Beach Gardens High School. My parents have lived in the same home for almost 50 years in Platte One on Balsam Street, the same street where my brother and sisters and I played stickball, kickball, basketball, and any other games we could dream of. I won't go into the games we played when the sun went down because some of those could get me into trouble still today with mom and dad. All this being, excuse me, all this being said, today I feel I'm witnessing the steady decline and decay of our neighborhood. Platte One, which is one of the original plats that MacArthur mapped out upon the city's founding in 1959. Some refer to this as the old Platte One, some refer to it as the Joe Sixpack crowd. City of Palm Beach Gardens, several years ago renamed as Palm Beach Gardens Estates. However, I refer to it affectionately as our neighborhood. As elected members of the city council, some of you for 20-plus years, you know the city, the section of the city that I'm referring to. If you don't, then perhaps you should take a field trip, check it out for yourself. Streets are in need of repaving, as example Holly Drive between Riverside Drive and Lighthouse Drive is so rough, at times it drives like a railroad track. One can find sidewalks with cracks, weed-infested city swales, and more than a few places. From a landscaping perspective, the median-long alternate A1A between RCA Boulevard and the city's south boundary is simply not acceptable for the gardens. However, the most disturbing deterioration of the city standards of Platte One is the multifamily duplexes on the east side of Holly Drive between Ironwood and Lighthouse Drive. Some of these duplex properties are so bad, excuse me, to describe to you that their living conditions are horrific. The surrounding neighbors have been living with this untenable situation for far too long. I could go on and on, but in issues of the time and the rest of the residents here tonight, I will conclude with this. This city granted itself as a signature city. However, it appears to me and others that this signature has begun to fade, if not be erased altogether, particularly in Platte One neighborhood. I'm here tonight to ask all of you for your commitment to restore the gardens' signature to my, I'm sorry, yours and my neighborhood, affectionately the old Platte One. As you move forward with your 2015 budget, please begin a policy to improve the conditions that I've described tonight. Some of those photos are there for your review. A signature city such as Palm Beach Gardens needs to be and should be all-inclusive. Thank you for your time, and I appreciate your services to the city.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate that.
Can I just, Steve, thank you. Maybe for the next meeting, the city manager could, you know, we got some pictures here. Could maybe give us a report on this and so forth and what we're planning, what we're doing or whatever.
Okay.
If that's the council's wish.
Yeah. We have Suzette Navertic, sorry. Just name and address for the record, please.
Sure. My name is Suzette Navertic. I live at 1103 11th Lane, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. I'm here tonight. I've heard the message several times. We're proud of our safety, proud of our signature city, proud of our quality of life, and I'm here to discuss the PGA waterfront briefly and to ask you for two things primarily. One is, the big concern is the traffic, and I'm here to ask you to consider, strongly consider, getting an independent traffic evaluation rather than looking at one that's handed to you. to you from the developer. I've set the meeting on Tuesday, and some of those figures are pretty fuzzy, questionable, so I ask you to get some yourself. The second thing is to, please just say no, and keep our cities strong. Pretty, everyone here is pretty attached to it. So, that's it, and if the project does go through, all the things that we are all so proud of are going to decline, and it's not in our residents' and our visitors' health, safety, or welfare, it's best interest, and that's all.
Thank you, Suzette. Appreciate it. No clapping, please. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe that we are going to hire our own traffic consultant to go over and review.
But I know this project has a long way to go, so I don't want to get into discussion tonight, there's no need, but certainly...
But that's our procedure, sir.
Yeah, I know there's a, there's a lot of, a lot of issues about traffic and stuff, so I...
Most important issue, it's not even in the city at this point.
Right, right.
So, how are we discussing something that's not in the city? Everybody has taken the assumption, okay, that this is gonna be a Palm Beach Gardens project, when we haven't even looked at whether we want to annex it. So, I don't know. But anyway, it's a long road, so there's a lot to be doing, so...
That's because they're asking to do it, but that doesn't mean we're gonna do it.
Suzette, thanks for staying informed and continue to be informed. There'll be a lot of activity on that, so I appreciate it. You're welcome back anytime to come talk to us, we appreciate that. Thank you. That's all I have for public comments on the agenda, consent agenda?
Move Consent.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Tonight, we're holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following cases. Ordinance eight, two thousand fourteen, second reading and adoption, Church and the Gardens, Inc. Resolution twenty-nine, two thousand fourteen, Church and the Gardens, Inc. Ordinance ten, two thousand fourteen, second reading and adoption, amend the Nature's Hideaway Plan Unit Development PUD. Resolution thirty-two, two thousand fourteen, amend the Nature's Hideaway Plan Unit Development PUD. Ordinance thirteen, two thousand fourteen, second reading and adoption, amendment to zoning for the City Center Plan Unit Development PUD. Resolution thirty-nine, two thousand fourteen, PUD amendment to allow microbreweries. Resolution forty-four, two thousand fourteen, Ballin Isles temporary modular structure. This means that the City Council is required by law to base its decision on the evidence contained in the record of this proceedings, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during the hearing. The Council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations, and will be permitted in the order of the witness's appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing, in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening, or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a card and give it to the city clerk. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help me God?
First up is Ordinance eight, two thousand fourteen. Will the clerk read the title?
Ordinance eight, two thousand and fourteen, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, re-zoning certain real property within the corporate limits of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, consisting of one parcel of real property totaling three point two-three acres in size, more or less located at the northeast corner of Holly Drive and I-95, to be known as the Church and the Gardens Plan Unit Development PUD, providing that this parcel of real property, which is more particularly described herein, shall be assigned the city's zoning designation of Plan Unit Development PUD, overlayed with an underlying zoning designation of residential low-density three, RL three, providing that the zoning map of the City of Palm Beach Gardens be amended accordingly, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes. Resolution twenty-nine is a companion item to Ordinance eight, two thousand fourteen, and will require council action. Resolution twenty-nine, two thousand and fourteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a site plan amendment for the Church and the Gardens Plan Unit Development PUD, located at the northeast corner of Holly Drive and I-95, as more particularly described herein, to increase the overall building area from nineteen thousand two-hundred-and-twelve square feet to thirty-eight thousand two-hundred-and-ninety-nine square feet, and certain other site plan modifications, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Over the public hearing, ask for any expertates since the last meeting?
Yes, I have one. I talked to Dave Morgan, who's a resident of the city, just prior to the meeting starting. The only thing was, I explained to him that there weren't, that the preschool wasn't expanding in the number of children, just that it was expanding in the fiscal size of the building, so that it could comply with new federal and state laws.
I had an email conversation with Ms. Booth.
I spoke to Robert and Linda Venata, who are neighbors in that area, last week, just on some of their concerns. Has anything changed since last reading? Anne, go ahead, please.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Anne Booth, with Urban Design Kill Day Studios, and I'm here tonight to represent the church. To answer your question, there has been one change since the last meeting. We did remove the fern at the request of Mrs. Tinsley, and replaced it with a low-to-ground jasmine crown cover, but other than that, nothing has changed.
Any staff comments on the change?
None.
Everything good? Okay. Anybody wishing to speak for or against this item? I have no cards. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring it back up for discussion or vote.
Mr. Chairman, move Ordinance eight, two thousand fourteen, on second reading and adoption.
I got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. I'm gonna open the public hearing for Ordinance, excuse me, Resolution twenty-nine, two thousand fourteen. Ask for any expertates?
Same as the previous?
Same.
Same. No, okay. Don't see anybody who wants to talk about this. Close the public hearing, bring it back up for discussion or vote.
Mr. Chairman, move Resolution twenty-nine, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank you very much for modifying the plan material you wrote.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Ordinance nine, two thousand fourteen. Will the clerk read the title?
Ordinance nine, two thousand and fourteen, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter fifty police of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, at Article three, Police Officers Retirement Trust Fund, by repealing subsection fifty dash sixty-two C and re-adopting same as revised, by repealing section fifty dash one-one-six, normal retirement and re-adopting same as revised, and by repealing section fifty dash one-fifty-one, eligibility to participate and re-adopting same as revised, in order to implement the terms of the collective bargaining agreement between the City of Palm Beach Gardens and the Palm Beach County Police Benevolent Association, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter fifty police shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Can I open the public hearing, and ask for any staff presentation? Any changes?
No, sir, been no changes since first reading.
Any questions to staff? Anybody wishing to speak on this item? I have no cards. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring it back up for discussion or vote.
Mr. Chairman, move Ordinance nine, two thousand fourteen, on second reading and adoption.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Next up, Ordinance ten, two thousand fourteen. Will the clerk read the title?
Ordinance ten, two thousand and fourteen, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an application from Nature's Hideaway Home Land Association Incorporated, to amend Ordinance thirty, nineteen ninety-five, which approved the Nature's Hideaway Plan Unit Development PUD, in order to transfer the master plan and related conditions of approval to Resolution thirty-two, two thousand fourteen, providing a conflicts clause and a severability clause, and providing an effective date for other purposes. Resolution thirty-two, two thousand fourteen is a companion item to Ordinance ten, two thousand fourteen, and will require council action. Resolution thirty-two, two thousand and fourteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an amendment to the Nature's Hideaway Plan Unit Development PUD, located west of Prosperity Farms Road, zero point one-seven miles north of Burns Road, as more particularly described herein, providing an amendment to the PUD relating to native upland preserve requirements incorporating conditions of approval from Ordinance thirty, nineteen ninety-five, and providing new conditions of approval, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Can I open the public hearing, ask for any expertates since the last meeting?
None.
None.
None. Has anything changed since first reading?
No changes, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have any questions on the project? Anybody wishing to speak for or against the item? I have no cards. Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring it back up for discussion or vote.
Mr. Chairman, move Ordinance ten, two thousand fourteen, on second reading and adoption.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. I'm gonna open the public hearing for Resolution thirty-two, two thousand fourteen. Any expertates since last reading? None. None.
None.
Nothing's changed. Don't need a presentation. Anybody wishing to speak for or against the item? Seeing none, I close the public hearing, bring it back up for discussion or vote.
Mr. Chairman, move Resolution thirty-two, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Motion, two seconds. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Next up, Ordinance twelve, two thousand fourteen. Will the clerk read the title?
Ordinance twelve, two thousand and fourteen, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter seventy-eight land development at section seventy-eight dash two-twenty, two-twenty-one, PJ Boulevard corridor overlay, by repealing subsection D and re-adopting same as revised, in order to allow microbrewery, craft brewery, brew pub as a major conditional use within the overlay, further amending Chapter seventy-eight at section seventy-eight dash seven fifty-one definitions, by repealing the definition of microbrewery, craft brewery, brew pub, and re-adopting same as revised, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter seventy-eight land development shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Can I open the public hearing, has anything changed since first reading?
No changes since first reading.
Any questions to staff? None. No cards on this. Anybody wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring it back up for discussion or vote.
Mr. Chairman, move Ordinance twelve, two thousand fourteen, on second reading and adoption.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero.
Or should I say das ekis?
What's that?
Das ekis.
No, just...
Two x's.
Ordinance thirteen, two thousand fourteen. Will the clerk read the title?
Ordinance thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an application from CFO two Palm Beach LP, the owner of the City Center Plan Unit Development PUD, to amend Ordinance fifteen, nineteen ninety-seven, Ordinance twenty-six, nineteen ninety-seven, Ordinance twenty-six, nineteen ninety-eight, and Ordinance eleven, nineteen ninety-nine, which approved and amended the City Center PUD in order to transfer the master plan and related conditions of approval to Resolution thirty-nine, two thousand and fourteen, providing a conflicts clause and severability clause, providing an effective date for other purposes. Resolution thirty-nine, two thousand and fourteen is a companion item to Ordinance thirteen, two thousand and fourteen, and will require council action. Resolution thirty-nine, two thousand and fourteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an application from CFO two Palm Beach LP, the owner of the City Center Plan Unit Development PUD, a thirteen point five-eight acre site located at the southeast corner of US Highway one and PJ Boulevard, as more particularly described herein, for a PUD amendment to allow a microbrewery within the PUD as a major conditional use, and incorporating applicable conditions for Ordinance fifteen, nineteen ninety-seven, Ordinance twenty-six, nineteen ninety-seven, Ordinance twenty-six, nineteen ninety-eight, and Ordinance eleven, nineteen ninety-nine, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Can I open up the public hearing, ask for any expertates since the first reading?
None.
None.
None. Has anything changed since first reading?
No changes.
Nothing. I have no comment cards on this. Anybody wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring it back up for discussion or vote.
Mr. Chairman, move Ordinance thirteen, two thousand fourteen, on second reading and adoption.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Can I open the public hearing for Resolution thirty-nine, two thousand fourteen? Any expertates?
None.
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 We don't need a presentation, everything is the same. Anybody wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, close the public hearing, bring it back up for discussion or vote.
Mr. Chairman, move Resolution thirty-nine, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Next up, Resolution forty-four, two thousand fourteen. Will the clerk read the title?
Resolution forty-four, two thousand and fourteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving a miscellaneous petition for the Ballin Isles Plan Community Development, PCD, which is situated south of PJ Boulevard and north of Northlake Boulevard, between the Florida's Turnpike and North Military Trail, as described more particularly herein, to allow construction of a temporary modular structure between the existing administrative building at ten sports, providing conditions of approval, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Can I open up the public hearing, ask for any expertates?
None.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Donaldson hearing, I've been sworn here tonight on behalf of Ballin Isles Community Association. I have with me Mr. Bob Davis and Mr. Ken Seaford, also here with Ballin Isles. Just a real quick presentation. You're certainly aware where Ballin Isles is. This particular request affects Parcell twenty-eight, which is the clubhouse parcel, and specifically, it's in the very back of the clubhouse parcel, adjacent to the existing bike office complex, which we affectionately refer to as the fourplex. And what we're looking at doing is providing a temporary office modular structure located where the red dot is provided on the, on the screen, and this is going to be provided for some office space to facilitate some major infrastructure improvements being planned by Ballin Isles. Specifically, Ballin Isles is working to really totally retool the community and put fiber optic cable down one hundred percent of the community, basically door-to-door, basically looking forward to the new technologies and the opportunities that will come in the future. Ballin Isles is always very forward-leading, both in the area of looking at green technologies and LED lighting and other things, so it's certainly looking at how they can be sustainable in the future. So, they have an agreement with Comcast, who will be doing the work, and it does require them to provide additional office space for both the Comcast technician, as well as one bike project manager. And so, that's what this request is for. We, the proposed trailer will be screened, be landscaped, it's in an area where it's not visible to the general public, and as many of you know, Ballin Isles is beautiful, and certainly very, very lush, and very, very heavily planted throughout. They've landscaping, so that it won't be visible from any public right-of-way, not even from the, from the back of the house of Ballin Isles. This is, it's a typical office-type construction trailer, colors will be matching the existing building, and we just would request your approval. It'll be there for a period of two years. There's a condition of approval that provides for it. It's not a simple process, because they're actually gonna be drilling and digging new cable, master cable throughout the community, and then to every single home. So, this is the wave of the future. I think many of you have heard that that's what they're doing in the Alpin Project. It's gonna be fiber, door-to-door, and in the houses, and really, that's the, the next step. So, we applaud Ballin Isles for their thinking, because they're trying to stay current and remain a viable concern here in the city. With that, either myself or Mr. Davis would be more than happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for the petitioner?
None.
Any questions? Don't need a staff presentation, everybody in agreement?
Staff is in agreement with the proposed petition. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, any questions to staff? None. Don't have any comment cards on this. Anybody wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing, bring it up for discussion or vote.
Mr. Chairman, move Resolution forty-four, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
Motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes five zero. Next up, Ordinance eleven, two thousand fourteen. Will the clerk read the title?
Ordinance eleven, two thousand and fourteen, in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, amending Chapter fourteen animals by repealing Article two, dogs and cats, and re-adopting same as revised, in order to adopt new regulations regarding the retail sale of dogs and cats, providing that each and every other section and subsection of Chapter fourteen animals shall remain in full force and effect as previously adopted, providing a conflicts clause, a severability clause, and authority to codify, providing an effective date for other purposes.
Can I open the public hearing, and ask for any changes since first reading?
Mr. Mayor, the only changes there were there were some, some minor clarifications and grammatical corrections, and a few cleanup items, and as well as the one-hundred-and-eighty-day sunset provision that you instructed, the council instructed me to put in between first and second reading. That's basically the changes.
Any questions to staff? No, I mean, okay. I've got thirty comment cards on this tonight. So, I'd ask, everybody, as you speak, give me your name and address as you start. Please be courteous to everybody in the chambers. No clapping, hissing, booing, aying. If it gets to that point, I'll clear the chambers, and I'll bring in one at a time, and we'll do the speeches that way. So, please, let's be respectful. Everybody's here tonight to talk about this issue, if it's important to them. We appreciate you coming tonight, but let's be courteous to the speaker, and let's listen to what everybody has to say. First up, if I'm sorry with your names, I'm gonna try them like this. Yeah. Yes. Doug Freevert? Sorry, Doug. Name and address, please.
Doug Freevert, one zero one eight seven De Sheen Avenue, and for point of record, I had a card in for Church and the Gardens, also.
I have that for later.
That's for later?
Yeah.
Great.
Resolution forty-eight, I have you down for. Resolution 48, I have you down for.
I thought you done Church on the Gardens, and I turned in a card for it. At any rate, I'd like to know for this one, what the new regulations are, could you explain to me the new regulations regarding the retail sale?
Excuse me?
What is the new regulation regarding the sale, I'm behind the times on this, are you outlawing the sale of cats and dogs in our city?
Correct, retail sales, correct.
If you have a litter of dogs, you know, and you're selling them to...
If you guys have a personal agenda against, you know, breeders out there who are harming it, take it up with the state, take it up with the federal government, don't put two businesses out of business, who knows, they might even be hot buying from those places. But you guys just don't understand business, I guess. You got a personal agenda, and for Mr. Lowman to bring up, I think, a personal agenda, he shouldn't even be paid for bringing this up. So for my minute and 30 seconds that I have left, I'm very disappointed that you're taking this route against these businesses. You have a problem with cat and dog breeders, take it up with the state and the counties where they're breeding them, not with the people who might be buying from them. Thank you.
Thank you. Rebecca Hoffman?
My name is Rebecca Huffman, my address is 58 Admiral's Court, Palm Beach Gardens, Florida. We have a retail puppy sale place in Palm Beach Gardens on Northlake Boulevard that sells sick pets, that refuses to live by the Florida statutes regarding the sale of sick pets. I worked for the attorney, who attempted to get them to settle strictly on the statutory basis for having sold a sick puppy that died within 30 days. They refused, their attorney laughed and said, "Try to collect your money, that place is best pets for you." They sell sick dogs, they know they sell sick dogs, and they refuse to honor any warranties, any laws, any commitments regarding that. Please push forward, and I applaud what you're doing.
Thank you, Rebecca. Ellen, no, no, please, please, I've already warned everybody on that, I don't want that tonight, let's be cordial and respectful. Ellen Rich, please.
My name is Ellen Rich, I live at 1 Child Drake Circle, Palm Beach Gardens, and I did bring this to the attention of the City Council, and I applaud you for having the intelligence and the foresight and the compassion to go through with this. I am not into putting any business out of business, but I am into putting out a business that makes its money selling puppies. So I'm going to read a letter I have from an extremely well-respected veterinarian in the state of Florida, to the Palm Beach Gardens City Council. I am an emergency and critical care specialist and currently the medical director of Sarasota Veterinary Emergency and Specialty Center in Sarasota, Florida. I have worked in New York, Massachusetts, and now Florida for the past six years. Although I do not live or work in Palm Beach Gardens, it does not matter. The situation with most pet stores is that sick puppies are sold to owners, and most often the owners are loving owners. I have seen numerous cases where a recently purchased puppy presents in respiratory distress either due to pneumonia or infectious tracheobronchitis, commonly referred to as kennel cough. The bill for a puppy requiring oxygen and other treatments can sometimes cost hundreds to thousands of dollars, depending on the severity of each case, and often these owners are not reimbursed. Additionally, often the breeding stock supplying pet stores are kept in terrible deplorable conditions and are not tested for congenital defects. Example is luxating patella, hip dysplasia, portosystemic shunts, et cetera, and all of these are costly to repair, some requiring surgery, or affecting the long-term lifespan of these pets. I strongly suggest to anyone looking for a dog to either purchase from a reputable breeder or rescue. All of these dogs should be much healthier than those bred and likely purchased through a puppy mill. Sincerely, Leslie Reed David, DVM, DAC, VECC, Diplomat of the American College of Veterinary Emergency and Critical Care. I'll leave this for you, and again, I thank you for the unanimous vote last term.
Thank you. Camille Beta?
I just would like to personally, oh, my name's Camille Porter, 8008 Via Hacienda. I would just want to personally thank each and every one of you for taking the time to address this extremely important issue. I am like numerous other people who never heard of puppy mills or pet store issues until I experienced it firsthand. My family purchased a puppy from Palm Beach Puppies via Indian Ridge Kennels located in Missouri. The following day, we were told to take the puppy to Palm Beach Puppies Vet, where the vet told us that the puppy was seven weeks old, and the vet stated that she had seen this puppy a month prior, which would make the puppy three to four weeks old, which is against USDA guidelines and illegal according to Florida statutes. I was told by the vet that the puppy was never going to be issued a health certificate because of her ongoing issues. My puppy had nasal disease, UTI, respiratory infections, coxidia, giardia, parasites, and had three cherry eye surgeries. We spent over $8,000, which included the cost of the pet, vet bills, and medicine. This file is all vet bills. At this time, I was going through cancer treatments myself, this sick puppy could have affected my health as well as my other three dogs I had in my home. My vet, as a precautionary measure, had given my other three dogs antibiotics. I then filed a criminal complaint on Palm Beach Puppies. The judge ruled that according to the Florida Lemon Law, Palm Beach Puppies was only liable for the first two weeks of vet bills, which only amounted up to $269. And the, and the judge ordered the owner of Palm Beach Puppies to do 10 hours of community service at a soup kitchen, because he sold me a dog without a health certificate. At the last meeting, their attorney stated to the council that they try not to purchase from puppy mills. Well, according to the health certificates submitted by Palm Beach Puppies, which is right here, I have four months' worth of health certificates, which is 126 dogs, approximately two-thirds were purchased from known puppy mills, including some on the Humane Society's top 101 worst in the country. One example is Mary Carpenter Blue Moon Kennels. 60 pages of USDA violations, between January 2011 and January 2014, Blue Moon Kennels was cited for no less than 60 pages of USDA violations, including a direct non-compliance in August 2013 for dogs with eye problems, hair loss, scans, and wounds. Repeat violations in December 2012 included numerous dogs needing vet care, including thin dogs, limping dogs, dogs with most, with a host of other problems. The USDA gave Blue Moon Kennels an official warning in January 2012 for 11 different problems, including a repeated failure to provide adequate veterinary care, a repeated failure to correct safety and housing issues, and other problems. Palm Beach County Animal Care and Control euthanizes about 9,000 dogs a year, but a new proposal to boost adopting, boost adopting calls for eventually getting that number down to zero. The county also intends to step up public outreach campaigns, encouraging people to turn to shelter animals or rescue groups instead of pet shops and breeders. The passing of this ordinance will support this county's position on the issue, and thank you very much for your time and hope you will pass this ordinance.
Thank you. Bob Yarnell, Jr.?
Hello, my name's Bob Yarnell, Jr., 365 Citrus Tower Boulevard, Claremont, Florida. I'm president of the American Canine Association. I'm speaking before you tonight on ordinance 11, 2014. This ordinance has some confusion. In Section 40, in Section 1438, transfer, sale and transfer of dogs or cats calls for an unconditional and outright ban of pet stores for the retail and sale or transfer of any dog or cat. Then, in contrary language, in Section 14-39, certificate of source, there is a detailing of the conditional ban for pet retailers to sell or transfer any dog or cat. It is not clear which approach the city is proposing on this ordinance. It is also common for one female in estrus, which is her heat cycle, to bring another female into heat. The proposed ordinance could very easily declare any residents of Palm Beach Gardens having only two females as meeting one of the criteria for a substandard puppy mill. Where, where was your veterinary science or facts in determining that what a puppy mill would or would not be? If your basis is that another township or city has done the same, then have you reviewed their facts or science, veterinary science, on this issue? Have you consulted this? Second, the ordinance 11, another criterion for factoring a breeder as a substandard breeder is if you breed a female, if a female is bred five or more times. In one single estrus cycle, or breeding cycle, a female is normally bred two to five times. So is this the correct terminology which you wish to use? If a dog is bred, or was it what you really meant? Did she whelp litters? If she whelped five or more litters? Did she give birth to five or more litters instead of being bred? I was an animal control officer and director of the Westminton Animal Control and Humane Society for over 10 years. We had animals turned in to us all the time. They had to, the biggest reason was either due to health or behavioral problems, and we had them signed, the dog showed no aggression, yet the county health department routinely required that we place these dogs into a quarantine because they did bite somebody. So you're actually, and you have to adopt, not shop, you're having people who may not want to take on the burden of bringing in a dog who has a behavioral problem that they don't know about, even the Humane Society might not know about, into a family with children or even infants, and they not, may not be prepared to do such, or they may not even want to do such. And that's why you should allow them to purchase them. But here, you're saying no. Thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Bob. Richie Goldberg?
Hello, Rich Goldberg, 8871 Club Estates Way in Lake Worth. I just wanted to speak about the ordinance, I don't have a prepared speech, I just wanted to share some of my personal experience. My family bought a dog from Palm Beach Puppies about seven years ago. It's a fabulous dog, we love this dog, probably the best dog I've ever owned. My son, since, purchased a dog from Palm Beach Puppies, again, fabulous dog, and my daughter as well, just bought a dog for my two granddaughters from Palm Beach Puppies. I've owned maybe 15 dogs in my lifetime, I've owned dogs which we've rescued, I've owned dogs which we've adopted from other families, and I've owned dogs which we bought and raised for puppies. And in my experience, there's a different bond between children and a dog that grows up with the children. And I think people should have a choice. I'm not against adopting dogs or rescuing dogs, but certainly people should be able to get a new dog. That's it, that's about it. I hope you all passed it.
Thank you for coming, appreciate it, Richie. Alan Garson?
My name's Alan Garson, I'm one of the two owners of the stores that if this ordinance passes, you're going to put us all out of business, and 20 people are going to be unemployed. And thank you for the opportunity to speak, but no one is a proponent of puppy mills, not me or anybody else. It makes absolutely no business sense whatsoever to purchase a puppy that you know is going to have health issues. No business would do that. It makes no sense. My vet bills would be increased, my customers would be unhappy, my word of mouth, I'd be out of business. I've been in business 10 years, 10 years, okay? I'm proud of that, I have an A-minus rating with the Better Business Bureau. How many people can boast that? I can. I do the best job that I possibly can do, I love what I do, it's a seven-day-a-week job, I don't have a day off or a time off. My wife and I, we have our puppies that aren't well, we go ahead and we nurse them, we take them home, my staff takes them home, and it's a daily, hourly problem that we have to face, and we're always concerned with our puppies. To say anything different is absurd, it just doesn't make any sense. How can I be in business 10 years? You know, we just opened up here about six months ago, you guys granted us a license, and we appreciate it. Now, with this ordinance, you want to go ahead and you want to restrict everybody in Palm Beach Gardens to go ahead and purchase a dog in a shelter, a rescue, or an internet? Internet is Russian roulette, you don't know the personality of the dog, you have no health guarantees, okay? I would never do that, it just doesn't make sense. Health, or rescues and shelters, they're fine for the right person, but rescue dogs have two issues, behavior, because their owners can't handle their behavioral issues, and they abandon them. Health issues, they can't afford the medical bills, so what do they do? They abandon them. And what happens when you get a rescue or a shelter dog? You know what happens? You have zero guarantees. You have to pay your own vet bills, which could be thousands of dollars. Now, I had a customer that bought a puppy for her eight-year-old daughter, a little Maltese, okay? They're good surprised it was on a Saturday. On Friday, she went to a friend's house, they had a rescue dog. Rescue dog bit the girl in the face. Three days in the hospital, on IVs, multiple surgeries that this poor little girl was facing. This is what you're going to go ahead and force the residents of Palm Beach Gardens to choose from? They're smart enough to know what they can do. My puppies have, all the breeders are listed on my cribs where we keep them, Google them, don't buy them if you don't like the breeder, it's your choice. And Delray has a similar ordinance right now. And you know what Delray did? They just tabled it for further review and inspection. But you know what the difference was there? That the owner of that store is working hand-in-hand with a couple of the council members and the city attorney to develop an ordinance that everybody can live with, and she doesn't have to be put out of business. You're not in the business here to put everybody out of the business, you're here to make people stay in business and enjoy it. What I'm asking you to do, I'm asking every single one of you, because I've asked each and every one of you to meet with me, no one has met with me, no one has spoken to me. I would love the opportunity for you to table this, give me the opportunity to meet with each and every one of you, which you have not done. And I would love to make an ordinance that we can all live with, that Palm Beach Gardens can be proud of.
Okay, thank you, Alan.
Thank you so much.
Heidi Garson?
Hi, my name is Heidi Garson, I live at 6399 Via Rosa Boca Raton, and I'm also the owner of Palm Beach Puppies, which my husband and I started 10 years ago. And when we started this business, we wanted to do a cageless environment, and it was all about the puppies, we were passionate, we still are, and we wanted to like a little nursery, basically, and we put them in baby cribs, and it's become our nursery. This is where we nurture the babies, we get them in, we love them, we care for them, we clean them, we bathe them, we groom them, if they're sick, we take them home with us, or our staff does. It's all about the puppy. I mean, these are our little babies that we want to give to somebody else and, and share them with us. I mean, you know, we're very passionate about what we do, it's seven days a week, we spend hours doing this, it's, you know, it's who we are as well, and, you know, we've been in business 10 years, I have people that have been wanting so many dogs, we do, we try our best, I don't want puppy mills, I can't stand them. How could anybody abuse an animal? It's pathetic, it's sick. But, you know, there's, there's good people, there's bad people. We try our best all the time, am I perfect? No, but I try my best to, to create a beautiful surroundings for these puppies, and for the people that, that buy these puppies from us, it's, you know, I can't explain enough how passionate and how, you know, we love what we do, these are our babies that we want to give and change people's lives and make them as happy as we are. And for you, like, not to have come to our store, to even acknowledge, to, to see how clean our store is, and how much love and effort we put in to keep the store spotless and clean, and the puppies happy, and bathed and brushed, and, you know, it, it's a nursery, it's, it's like you should be, I can't believe that you haven't even spoken to us, it's very one-sided and unfair, I mean, I, like my husband said, I think it would be great if you could table this and speak with us, we want to work with you, we want the best We want the best for puppies, period. This is what it's all about for us. So, you know, to put us out of business, that's not going to get, you know, that's not going to help anybody. It's not going to help your community, you know, I mean, we bring money into your community, we help with education, you know, I want the best thing for your community as well as, you know, for our puppies. So, you know, I ask you again to see if you would, to please table it, and come visit our store, come talk to us, come look at our breeders, they're all there, everything is on the paper. We don't have secrets, we want you to get a healthy puppy, that's what we want. And, you know, we go out, to be in business ten years and not, you know, have a million, you know, people, I mean, we don't sell sick dogs, and when we do, we stand behind them. It's, you know, this is what we try to do. So, thank you.
Thank you Heidi. Roxana Platt?
Good evening, my name is Roxana Platt, I live at 8110 Batista Way here in Palm Beach Gardens. I'd like to preface what I'm about to say to tell you that I am a physician, I've been in Palm Beach Gardens for over twenty years. I've never been sued for malpractice. If I did malpractice, I would hope that I would be sued. And I feel that my experience was anything but that which has been expressed with the last three people who have come to this podium. I purchased for my daughter one year ago exactly, a little teacup Yorkshire terrier. The word teacup itself is a misnomer, pet stores use that to draw public. Teacup, if you look it up, is a disastrous term, never used by good breeders. The little dog that we bought for, I think it was fifteen hundred dollars, I had not seen the dog, but my daughter came to me and said, "Oh mommy," I promised her a dog. She says, "Mommy, there's the most beautiful little dog." And of course, kids always get their physician parents when they're the busiest, so I just gave her the charge card. I said, "Okay honey, I can't." I was at Chatsworth at PJ National where I was working at the time, I do rehab there very heavily. She came back about forty minutes later with a dog, I was aghast. This little dog, who was less than a pound, had runny eyes, had bony spine, hair off of his tail. He was so sickly, he smelled so foul. I said, "Honey, you take that dog back, and you tell them to take it to the vet." She says, "Oh mommy, I love the dog, please." I said, "Get the dog to the vet." Their vet, and I'm talking about Best Pets to You on Northlake Boulevard, I paid fifteen hundred dollars for a dog that was dying. And they knew the dog wasn't well because it was so shortly after we had the dog that we began our vet bills. These are vet bills here, the dog lived less than a month. We had the dog on IVs, we had the dog on multiple medications. That little darling had pneumonia, tracheobronchitis, which is the kennel cough, he had giardiasis, which is a terribly infectious intestinal disease, he was underweight, his hair was falling off of his tail, and the vet that actually had the contract with Best Pets for You was terribly concerned, and I have his letter here describing how worried he was about the dog and that the dog needed further care immediately. The little dog is dead. What we have left, and I want to cry because it's very sensitive, we have his ashes still, and we have a memorial plaque and his toy, and we keep that in my daughter's room. We have suffered so terribly because we fell so in love with this little guy, and I'm glad that these pet owners, these pet shop owners have had good luck with their perfect dogs. I didn't have that luck. And after this, we saw many, many people that we discussed the problem with who had had the same problems. This is a memorial my older daughter made for my younger daughter with a picture of a little dying dog and a poem about his death and the life that he had with us. And I pray something is done. We have had dozens of phone calls, to lawyers, everything we could to try to get Best Pets to You to respond in some way to help us. I have almost four thousand dollars of vet bills, and have not even had the courtesy from Monica Goze who owns Best Pets to You. Now I understand they're closing down, they've been evicted, they have a sixty thousand dollar eviction notice for a lack of paying rent, and nothing has still been done about this little dog, not one answer. So, I ask you please to pass your ordinance, keep it going, and I will continue to rescue dogs as I have done, I just brought one recently back from Costa Rica. I will rescue dogs, I will never allow anybody I know and love to do this again.
Thank you very much. I can't really read this one, is it Leroy Cordona? Cardona? I'm sorry, sorry, Cordova.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Name and address please, sir.
Leroy Cordova, 2320 Greenbrier Drive, Delray.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for this opportunity to join you in this collective concern, and believe it or not, it is. I am a shareholder in Love My Puppy of Boca Raton, Florida, and I assure you that the fundamentals that everybody is discussing here this evening, they're aligned with ours, they really are. With similar enthusiasm, Love My Puppy believes that regulation of breeding facilities should be of the highest standards. And Love My Puppy is not your adversary, but I think that we're your ally. Since opening our doors four years ago, we have been visited by local governing bodies no less than a dozen times, and each time receiving only the highest marks, and we've never been issued a violation. Love My Puppy proudly displays the origin of our puppies, knowing that they are governed by standards beyond our ability, and we rely on those standards. We also know that of the more than five million puppies in shelters every year, puppy vendors, puppy stores are only responsible for a total sale number of five hundred thousand. So, as, as we approach this, I mean, even without the puppy stores, we make up less than ten percent of the total puppies that end up in a shelter. So, and the last I remember, I am a math person, the puppy shelters are just a different vendor, and they're the majority shareholder of puppies made available. The conditions of puppy stores who abide by regulations, as well as their sanctioned breeders, are not the recipients of your frustration. Love My Puppy has adopted and will implement this year, an additional six breeder facility site visits per year. Currently, we only do four. Upon arriving at Love My Puppy, each and every one of our puppies undergoes a monitoring period where the dog is not released, it receives the highest veterinary care at the most modern of facilities. So confidently, I can assure you that our puppies are not statistics of the abandoned puppies in shelters and rescues. In closing, I encourage you to reach out to Love My Puppy and create a goodwill environment. Where together, we will work and ensure that breeders are forced to both raise and maintain standards. Thank you.
Thank you Leroy for coming. Michelle Rivera?
Good evening, my name is Michelle Rivera, I live at 125 Cypress Cove in Jupiter.
Thank you.
And I am here in support of this ordinance. I have worked as a veterinary technician for the veterinarian for some of these pet stores, and I can tell you firsthand about the fecal tests that I've seen, the giardia, the toxidia, these animals are coming in very, very sick. And these pet stores do not, do not stand behind their product at all, and I can tell you that firsthand. They also tell you that they don't get them from puppy mills, but they won't tell you what a puppy mill is. Puppy mill is a large breeding, commercial facility. If they have a sign that says USDA on their door, and they're pointing to that and saying, "Our puppies are all USDA certified," that's proof that they're coming from a puppy mill because the USDA doesn't certify anything less than fifty breeding pairs. So that's proof. And, you know, when they, when these pet store owners are saying they're working seven days a week on these sick puppies, gee, why do they have to work so hard? Are the puppies really that sick? You know, and my point is, those of us who work in rescue are working seven days a week also, cleaning up after them, and we're not making any money, and they're making lots of money. In fact, we're spending a lot of money. I've worked at several different shelters, and I can tell you firsthand, twenty-five percent of the dogs that come into shelters have come from pet stores because they cannot be trained, they can't be housebroken, they don't fit in, they take, people take these puppies home at a very small age, and then when they find they can't manage them, they bring them into our shelter. Well, who wants an eight-month-old puppy that's never been trained or never been worked with? And so they, that's added to the nine thousand dogs that are being put to sleep every year. It's just not, it just doesn't make sense for us to be killing dogs over here and breeding them over there. And they're saying that they're not getting them from puppy mills, but I went to Tallahassee and I pulled the health certificates from Palm Beach Puppy, and I can prove that those puppies are coming from puppy mills. I've seen them, I've seen the undercover video of the puppy mills where they came from. And they may tell you their stores look fantastic, and they probably do. I've seen the cribs, I've seen, I've seen the way they cuddle and coddle these puppies just to get them out the door. But at the end of the day, these puppies are a commodity for them, and puppies should not be commodified. Dogs have been our loyal partners and friends for thousands of years, and I think it's time we return the favor. Thank you.
Thank you. Rick Burgess?
Good evening, Rick Burgess, 2012 Altametals Lane, Delray Beach, Florida. I came up tonight to speak to you guys about these ordinances. We've had this ongoing in Delray Beach for quite some time. I am currently the owner of four rescue dogs. And even though I've rescued dogs, you know, seeing the information that's been readily available, the source of where it comes from, the facts of information, I know it's a tough decision for you guys to hear all this out in a short period of time. Do your due diligence, do some research, I know your time is limited, I know most of you have full-time jobs. Spend the time with not just the owners of the stores, maybe some people in the rescues, it's important. Also, take the opportunity, look at all the other cities that have maybe passed ordinances, have had lawsuits filed, have decided to change the ordinances back, have refused to pass the ordinances. It's, it's a hot topic, it's a big issue, but before you move forward, do your work, figure out the facts, get the information. There's a lot of information out there that's not good information. No one wants to see dogs hurt, no one wants to see dogs die. The owners of the store are small business owners. Small business owners make this country. As elected officials, take the opportunity to help the small business owners and to set a message. Delray was going to move forward with their ordinance, they stopped their ordinance, they're researching it. We have one store in Delray, they don't want to see a business owner affected, and they don't want to see dogs abused. So if you have the opportunity to do so, you have the power to make the decision to say, "Hey, let's hold off on this." It's important, it's important for puppies, it's important for rescues, and it's important for everyone involved. Thank you.
Thank you Rick. Tom Watley?
Mr. Mayor, city council members, and just on a quick praise note for your city. Chief, I was explorer advisor for ten years with the city of Delray Beach. And when I saw your explorers up here, it's truly a reflection of your police department. They're sharp, perfect gig lines, you can tell they're razor-sharp creases and they're good to go, it was funny seeing that up here.
Name and address please.
Yes, Tom Watley, 900 East Atlantic Avenue, City of Delray Beach. I came up here tonight because City of Delray Beach has been a hot topic. I was also at the City of Plantation where they recently went to entertain this as well. City of Plantation elected to table it until the latter part of October to get more information. City of Delray Beach, in their second reading, the council members decided to take this ordinance with the advice of the city attorney to look at the constitutionality of this ordinance. Many people will get up here and give you a list of cities and tell you, you know, that these cities have adopted the ordinance, but what they won't tell you is the cities that either revised it, or pulled it, or they're not going through with it. And there's a reason for that. But, in speaking with one of the store owners tonight, I was kind of curious, because City of Delray Beach council members did do this, they actually went out to the store because, you know, they were hearing all one side, and it's easy for somebody to put a DVD player with the, with the Humane Society video in the arms of an angel and a shaking puppy and really gets your attention, it gets my attention. All right? But, what they did was they did their due diligence, they went down to the store, they looked at the records that this store owner has to keep. Now, I've heard some tragic stories with sick puppies, and no one can deny that that happens. However, in my personal experience, I, you know, I had a puppy that I got from a private breeder, we had to get wheaten terriers because the whole family has hair dander issues, and the dog got sick and died within, it had to be three weeks. And, you know, I, I, we just don't know why, you know, I didn't, I wasn't, didn't have enough money at the time to pay for, you know, the autopsy for the dog. So I elected to go to a store in Delray Beach, and I bought two wheaten terriers eight and nine years ago. They're happy, they're healthy, I have the pedigree, I know where they came from, one of them right here in Palm Beach County that breeds wheaten terriers. So it's not all bad. Puppies get sick, sometimes they die, whether it's from a private breeder, or whether it's from a store. And on top of that, the store owner in Delray Beach has sold forty-five hundred puppies in the past eight years of the blessing of the city. So my question to the council at that time was, if she, if she sold nothing but sick puppies, A, she wouldn't be able to stay in the business with the high rent on East Atlantic. If you've been down here, you know that's high rent. She wouldn't be able to make her bills. B, where were all the sick puppies? Now you heard a couple tragic stories tonight, but if the stores here in Palm Beach Gardens sold, and one of them I think was twenty years, if that store sold sick puppies for twenty years, you should have a line going out back behind the police department. And it's just not there, folks, but at least, if you could table it, I'm not asking you to vote no on it, table it, and at least have the city attorney look at, you know, whether it's a constitutional issue, and at least visit the stores and look for yourself and look at what they have to go through maintaining puppies. Thank you very much.
Thanks for coming. Jackie Millie?
Good evening, mayor, vice mayor, council, attorney and staff. My name is Jackie Millie, I live at 1710479 Port North in Lockshahatchee. I am here on behalf of my daughter Amanda, who is sitting there, she's just shy, but she felt strongly her message needed to be heard. In 2012 to 2013, I was employed as a kennel technician at Best Pet for You. I worked there almost a year, I left because I could no longer bear witness to what I saw as animal cruelty and consumer fraud. Weekly, we would get shipments of puppies by trucks from the Midwest. I would say anywhere from fifteen to twenty-five puppies a week. At approximately eight weeks old, some were obviously younger because they had no teeth when they arrived. The puppies would arrive after traveling in the back of a semi-truck for days at a time, covered in dirt, feces, and urine. Medical problems such as kennel cough, upper respiratory infections, giardia, and other parasitic conditions were regular occurrences. Some also arrived with bowel issues from not eating properly during the long transport. When we could diagnose it in time, I was told to remove the sick puppies from the front of the store and place them in the back, away from the public view. But still, sometimes we sold them knowing they were sick. Often employees, often customers, would come back to the store to complain about those costly illnesses. I knew that it wasn't right, but I was naive and wanted to believe that I was helping the puppies. When puppies were too sick to stay in the store all night alone, instead of the store owner taking them to the emergency clinic, I was instructed to take them home so I could keep them alive through the night. Sometimes I kept the puppies for three nights in a row. It was horrible, and I knew it was wrong, that they weren't getting the vet care they needed. It was so cruel. The end for me came when there was an Italian greyhound puppy with an injured leg. She was sold to a customer who then brought her back because she could not afford the cost of the surgery required to fix her leg. I begged and pleaded for the owner of our store to let me keep her or buy her for whatever she paid for her, so her leg could be fixed. She denied all of my requests and instead sent the puppy back on the semi-truck as more puppies... back on the semi-truck as more puppies were being delivered that morning. It broke my heart completely. She was full of life, energy and love. She was sent back, just like a defective package, when she could have lived a long, happy life with someone who truly loved her. I often thought, why I didn't say something sooner about what I was seeing, but I didn't know any better. I just thought that everyone did business that way. I may not have said anything then, but I'm saying something tonight. This, I hope that the town of Palm Beach Gardens will stop this from happening and support a ban against sale of puppy mill dogs. Thank you. Amanda.
Thank you. Michael Quinn?
Michael Quinn, 4210 Hyacinth Circle North, Palm Beach Gardens. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, city council members. Speaking on behalf of Mrs. Whitney Stark, 4782 North Citation Drive, apartment 106, Delray Beach. Ms. Stark states, "I purchased Lola on March 14th, 2014, from Palm Beach Puppies in Palm Beach Gardens on sale for $1,600 and brought her home that Friday night. Upon purchasing her, I asked if she was on any medication or had any problems, and they said she had recently had a cold, but had finished her medication. The next day, she began coughing. I called Clintmore Animal Hospital, which is an approved vet by the Cellar, and got an appointment the next day. She is diagnosed with an upper respiratory infection, worms and mange due to her poor immune system. She began taking medication less than two days from bringing her home, and has been on various medications ever since that day. I have been to the, to the Cellar's vet with her four times since March 14th, moving back again in the next week to see if she needs to stay on the same latest medication she's been on for nine weeks, medication that can cause neurological issues. Palm Beach Puppies has paid roughly $300 of my vet bills, but today told me they would not pay anymore. I have incurred $200 additional to date, but as I previously mentioned, I'll look back next week for the same issue, as well as being ongoing. Getting them to pay after the initial free visit took numerous calls and was not easy. When I tried getting reimbursed for my latest bills, I was told Alan said they would not be paying me additional funds, and he would not return my call. I was never given the paperwork that states where she came from, and I never received the paperwork stating she was AKC certified. Thank you, and I hope you pass this ordinance."
Thank you very much. Matthew Robinson Taylor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Matthew Robinson Taylor, 2638 Lake Drive, Singer Island. I'm currently an employee with Palm Beach Puppies. I've been working there for a while now. And my understanding of what's really going on here is that this is, this is very short-sighted, and this is really jumping the gun. I think puppies can evoke a gut reaction from people, like what you had heard before, and that, you know, there are going to be cases of sick dogs regardless of where the dog comes from, no matter what. I mean, it, it's just a fact of life with these things. Them coming from us, or that being from breeder, that's really not our issue, but this is going to cause people to be emotional. And so I think that they're attacking this problem backwards. The puppy mills and the issues that need to be brought up, that needs to be brought up, you know, at a state level, at a federal level. Trying to victimize the owners of the small businesses dealing with this, and I think working honestly as hard as they can to legitimize good breeding and good practice with these animals. I know since I've been there, it's an incredibly loving environment. I, I bought a dog there. Every dog I've seen there, I, we care for with the utmost respect. It, it's, it's, it's a degree of care I couldn't have imagined at a pet store. I really didn't know what I was getting into getting in there. And I was very pleasantly surprised. It's, it's become a personal thing for me because what, what I'm seeing with this is that there's a lack of understanding, and there's a genuine concern here for the, the safety and, you know, stopping the abuse of these animals. But that concern is being addressed far too quickly. There, there's no real interest in, you know, again, seeing what's going on at our stores, seeing how we log, you know, who we deal with in terms of breeders and what's being done in that regard. I think if you were to come and take a look, or at least take a moment to, or not a moment, but take a while to review this and get all the information, I believe that there is absolutely a way that we can meet somewhere in the middle, because I think the objective for all of us here is to not only allow people the chance to get dogs, you know, breeding being a culture, being an American thing, predating America. These dogs are, are wonderful to get their hands on, and we have a rapport with breeders and different kinds of things that people can't generally get, you know, from their set location. So we offer that opportunity to people. But also to allow us the chance to, if, if we're doing, if we're not doing something right, or if there is, you know, some regulation that we could implement that would allow these dogs to be, you know, guaranteed that everything is going more smoothly, I think we should look into that, making the process more streamlined and more safe for everyone involved, not just cutting it outright. And, and really, I, I think it's just a boorish approach. It's, it's honestly not, not very, not very comprehensive, other than the fact that it's generally white-sweetened.
Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate that. Mara Cox?
Hi, it's Marcy Cox, and I live at 9100 Quail Trail, Jupiter, Florida. I also am an employee of Palm Beach Puppies. I also owned a puppy store up in Jupiter that was there for quite a while and had to close due to financial circumstances in 2011. But the fact is that I also agree with the fact that people have a choice. Where the puppies come from is something that I know that when I owned my own store, I did as much possible research to weed out, you know, and get good breeders, and really worked very closely with them. I wouldn't be working for a store if I felt they did anything less than that. I only work a couple of days a week. I don't have to work. I'm very fortunate. I do it because I love it. I see how they love the puppies. And it, it's also a point of, I think rescue is a great thing. My sister, she was in New York. Her, her son is a vet, and she only rescues her dogs, and it's great, but she has to work with them. I know that I personally have nine dogs, and they have all been raised since puppies. And I, you know, they're my kids. I never had children. They are my children. And all the dogs that we take into the store now, you know, we keep them in top-notch condition. They get bathed, they get fed really several times a day. We love them like they're our own pets, and I think it shows. I think also the crib environment, I had that in my store as well. It's wonderful for the socialization of puppies. When people say that, you know, they get puppies and then they're surrendered to a shelter because of behavioral problems, whose fault is that? You know, that's the owner that's taking the dog home. You know, dog, especially from a puppy, is very trainable. You know, they aim to please. Dogs are amazing. And I just really feel also that, you know, you really have to, you can't go after a small business owner because of, you know, some of these stories that we're hearing are like heartwarming. You know, you want to cry, and it, it's terrible, and they're horrible circumstances and, and really frustrating, but that's going to happen from anywhere. You know, it's, when I had business too, it was like people came in and said, well, you know, this thing is wrong. Well, you know, two, you know, if you have a child and something's wrong with it, you deal, you know, you deal with it. And, you know, you stand, they stand behind the puppies. They have the vet check them, and they go home. And, you know, there are certain laws that govern responsible ownership for the stores to stand behind. So that's, thank you.
Thank you, Marcy, for coming. Looks like Stephanie, some nice handwriting, I can't, Reynoso? Very fancy. Very fancy. Curzafi, I couldn't get all the letters in there. Sorry. Name and address, please.
Stephanie Reynoso, 11175 Palm Land Road.
Thank you.
I am a store man. I'm a store manager at Palm Beach Puppies and have managed at two different locations, one in Wallington and one here. We recently just opened in Palm Beach Gardens. As far as, you know, the overall health and care of our puppies, we have a store vet that's in once a week.
It's okay. Take your time. Please stop the clock. Take your time.
You know, most important, I think that this is my livelihood as, as well as the rest of my staff. You know, we came here because we feel strongly about it. We run a really tight shift with all of our puppies. They're all fed regularly. We vaccinate, we microchip, we are deworming, we're checking feces. I just... I can only speak for our store specifically. We don't ever guarantee that every puppy we send home is never going to get sick. I think that that comes with purchasing live animals. Puppies sometimes, most of the time, are born with parasites. They get that from their parents. As far as genetic issues, we cover that for the first year against any type of hereditary congenital defects, whether it's through full reimbursement or surgical procedure. We also are covering vet bills for the first two weeks, sometimes even until the puppy is better. Again, sicknesses, whether it's a cough, ear eye infections, heartworms, parasites, but we don't knowingly ever send a puppy home. If anything, we tell them that they have to be checked out by a vet and cleared prior to going home. There's been numerous occasions where we've held puppies in our store, you know, in continued treatment, or at least until our vet has been able to clear that puppy specifically. Our store vet is in once a week. We're constantly checking feces, we're deworming, we're bringing them to the vet, we're taking them home. One of the ladies, I know she mentioned that, you know, she felt it was cruel, or she's harmful to the health of the puppy to have to take them home. I've been working with Palm Beach Puppies now for five years. As a staff manager, I've managed with them at two different locations, and I feel like I have just as much veterinary experience, mostly because I work hand-in-hand with all of our vets. We have three different vet hospitals that we work with. So I know what it takes to keep a puppy alive through the night, whether it's giving them IV fluids to syringe-feeding them every two to three hours. These are the same things that a vet office would be doing. So I don't feel like we are put in a position that's ever hurtful or harmful to the puppy. And that goes for the rest of our staff. You know, every employee that comes in, they're trained on how to properly handle a puppy specifically. So, you know, I just feel like, for me and for my staff, like, this is important. This is our livelihood, but most importantly, we do care. And that's it.
Thank you, Stephanie. You did good. Thank you. Don Anthony?
I'm Don Anthony, Communications Director for the Animal Rights Foundation of Florida. We have 5,000 members around the state, based in South Florida at 1431 North Federal Highway. Thank you for this ordinance. It is well-written and it's comprehensive. No loose dogs or cats running amok in the city. Animals must be vaccinated so as to protect them and other animals. Commercial mass breeding facilities not allowed within the city. All great. Pet shops can sell food, supplies, beds, doggy daycare, grooming services and veterinary services, any of which can be a successful business on its own. Pet shops can always display and sell adoptable animals from animal control, humane societies and registered rescue organizations. A ban on commercially-bred animals will protect unwitting consumers who buy a dog and then find out months later that we've, like, we've already heard here tonight that it needs thousands of dollars in vet bills because of all the inbreeding. It will protect the taxpayers who end up paying for these animals with sky-high vet bills when they're eventually dumped at shelters. Now, stores that may be currently selling commercially-bred dogs will have six months through the end of this year and into January of 2015 to adhere to the new rules. That's a very generous amount of time. Contrary to any hysterical rhetoric you may hear tonight, this does not put any stores out of business. They can continue to sell all the goods and services I just mentioned. We are in favor of pet shops, and we hope that more succeed in this town. Remember, this is not about how nice the store owners are, how beautifully decorated the stores are, and whether they take the animals home on the weekends or not. This is about the suppliers, the commercial breeders that supply the stores. As time moves forward, so must our attitudes and so must business. I'm sure the guy who used to sell buggy whips was upset at Henry Ford when those darn horseless carriages started rolling off the assembly line. But businesses adapt. You're giving local businesses a generous six-month period to make a minor adaptation. This ordinance is more than fair. It does the right thing to protect not only the animals, but consumers, residents and taxpayers. Now, can we have everyone in favor of passing this ordinance as is quietly? Please stand up. Thank you very much. Applause.
Thank you, Don.
Yep.
Jennifer Folia? Sorry, Jennifer.
My name's Jennifer Folia. I live in Jupiter, Florida, 105 Union Circle.
Thank you.
To be perfectly honest, I have worked in, I'm going to school right now for wildlife biology. I'm an account executive for a large processing company. And I do a lot of wildlife rescue. And I see a lot of things. I've interned at several veterinarian's offices while I was going to school for Vet Tech. And the majority of the puppies that came in were recently bought from local pet stores. They had everything from canine influenza, hip dysplasia, fleas, ticks, parasites. And I will tell you something. If the dog is born from a healthy mother, they are not born with parasites. They're not. And the majority of these puppies come from puppy mills. I have pictures on my phone of puppy mills. If you guys have not seen where these puppies come from, I'm not saying that every one of them comes from a puppy mill, but the ones that do, the treatment that these animals endure is just, I can't even speak about it because they are kept in cages their entire lives. And they're just used over and over and over again. They're never given a chance to do what they do as dogs or cats. They're just used as breeding animals. And it breaks my heart. I rescue everything that I possibly can. I do volunteer work at Bush Wildlife Sanctuary. I volunteer everywhere that I possibly can. I see a lot of stuff. I've, I've been around. But I'm telling you right now, I have had friends who have purchased globally, and, I mean, two Yorgies alone came into the veterinarian's office that I was working at. One had hip dysplasia so badly, after two years, because I stayed friends with her, after two years, the dog was paralyzed so badly that all she could do was drag herself around by her front two paws. Now, if you want to tell me that that's something that comes from a healthy breeder, these are puppy mills that need to be, not just strictly regulated, they need to be shut down. It's not right. It's not right what they do to these dogs and cats. They're kept in cages their entire lives. It's not about shutting down small businesses. It's about regulating what happens to these animals because it's the animal's welfare that's at, that's at stake and it's risky. And it's just, it's heartbreaking. It's heart-wrenching to see. And I wasn't even going to get up and speak, but just after hearing the people speak, I just feel like I had to say something. I've spoken on the news before, you know, about other issues, you know, lionfish invasions, anything you could possibly imagine. And puppy mills are at the core of where my heart is. I've, I have seen them. I have visited sites where they have just dogs in these little tiny cages. And they don't care about the dogs. All they care about is the fact that these are constantly, constantly bred. That's all they care about. That's it. And then when those dogs are no longer used, they're disposed of. That's it. Or they're given to the pound, or they're destroyed within seventy-two hours. So I just wanted to say.
All right. Thank you, Jennifer, for coming on. Michelle Lazar? Michelle's the City Commissioner in Hallandale Beach.
Tonight, I'm here as an activist and dog lover. Good evening, Michelle Lazar, 2621 Northeast 10th Street, Hallandale Beach, Florida. Let me just say that Delray Beach, so we know, had a loophole in their ordinance. And we asked them to please table it until a new attorney came on, and we could redraft, make it tighter and close that. So let's just say that upfront about Delray. Good evening, and I usually stand up here and thank the selected body for their support. So first, I'll say thank you, and then I'll say the following. I'm really tired and angered by attorneys and store owners denying that they get their dogs from mills. The opposition always claims- The opposition always claims that there's no legal definition of what constitutes a mill. Don't they really think that that is a weak argument to plead their case? These are deplorable places with inhumane conditions. What difference does it make what we call them? Using the puppy mill definition defense is nothing more than smoke and mirrors. We have the proof. You've heard the testimony. You've seen the documents. No store ever publicly addresses why their dogs are sick. Sometimes dogs get sick is just not an answer anymore. If the store's claiming that they don't get their dogs from somewhere other than the places we've shown, why don't they show us? Where are they getting their dogs from? So if they don't buy their dogs from large-scale commercial breeding facilities where the money is valued over the welfare of the puppy, then where do they get their dogs? In a recent newspaper article, the owner of Best Pets said, "I can prove that all my puppies come from good breeders." Okay, so where's the proof? And what's the definition of a good breeder? Is Laura Lee Thomas a good breeder? At the last inspection, she had 1,075 dogs on her property with USDA violations. How many dogs until we can call it a mill? Is Lizanne Miller a good breeder? She had only 166 dogs, but when the inspector told her to give her dogs fresh water, the dogs drank continuously for over a minute. Think about how long a minute is. Palm Beach Puppies buys from breeders like Lynne Jackson, who was on the HSUS 101 Worst Puppy Mills Report, and at times has had over 600 dogs on the commercial facility, with violations such as a female Shiba Inu with an open one-inch wound on the side of her neck. Is this a good breeder? So I'll ask them, if all of us are wrong, please tell us what constitutes a good breeder and what defines a puppy mill. When these stores tell us that they don't buy their dogs from mill, it's like the wife who finds her husband with another woman and he says, "No, honey, it's not what you think you saw." We shouldn't believe our eyes, and apparently you all shouldn't believe your ears. The stores rely on deception, fraud, and exploitation. They keep legal documents from consumers because consumers don't even know that they're entitled to them. If you leave any loopholes open for them to sell dogs, they're gonna continue to sell the very dogs that no loving breeder would ever sell to a pet store. Do I need to define loving also? People who make a living by others suffering are a breed that I will never understand. No one wants this town to be sued, but so few will ever say, as this council has said, that this sort of commerce will not continue in Palm Beach Gardens. And if, if this law is found unconstitutional, then they can go right back to ripping people off the way they have for years. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the comment cards that I have. Anybody who has spoken tonight before us, if you have not been sworn in, you were not here at the beginning of the meeting, please stand. They don't? I have it sworn in here. Okay, all right. Just wanna make sure. Thank you. Okay. Well, I have it as a sworn-in comment, so I just wanna make sure I was in for the record. Okay, so I see no more comment cards. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Bring it back up for discussion. Anything? Eric?
Boy, this is a pretty emotional night. I think the most emotional part of it was when everybody stood up. I started this whole thing. I started this whole thing because someone asked me to do it. I'm not a dog owner. Never owned a dog in my life. But having been through this last month and having seen all of the information that I have researched on the internet and all of this, which City Attorney has given me, I can't not vote for this. I just can't not vote for this. It's, um, it's not something I would want to go on and continue to go on in our city. I'm very proud of our city. We have spent the last 20 years building it. And, um, and I'm very proud of everything we've accomplished, but, um, this, these businesses, I don't want to judge them, but I will tell you that they, having heard everything that I've heard tonight and at the last, in the first reading, I'm very proud of the fact that I brought this forward to the council. So I'm gonna be voting for this, and I hope you will too.
David?
Well, I have done a little bit of outside research. I contacted a couple of vets. I contacted a couple of breeders, not puppy mill breeders, local breeders, including the breeder that bred my own dog. When it came down for me to buy a dog, I used my experience of working in a pet store 30 years ago and decided I was not going to purchase a dog from a puppy store. I did visit one of the puppy stores that was here seven years ago when we were in the process of purchasing it just to confirm my thoughts and see if things had changed, and they had not. The puppies that we looked at were not good quality dogs. And we ended up getting our dog from a private breeder up in North Florida, and we got a great quality dog. It comes right down to it, have things changed in the last 30 years? And they actually have. They've gotten worse. I think the conditions are worse now than they were when I worked there. I think there's less compassion in the industry. I don't think we're putting any businesses out of business. This does not cover fish. It doesn't cover ferrets. It doesn't cover all the other pets that are sold. You can make a pretty good living on running fish and other pets and pet supplies and everything. The other thing, and I have not experienced this except for seven years ago, was deceptive practices of the sales force. I was told how to do this, so I'm kind of aware of it. You know, the kid comes in and you get the dog into the kid's hands. You look at where the kid's looking, which dog, and you pick that out, and you make sure that that kid gets that dog. And then you start, you know, encouraging the kid to play with the dog. That's how you sell the dog. Then you sell them all the supplies and other things too. And sometimes the supplies can be quite, quite good. So one of the things I know that we're going to allow is we're going to allow rescue dogs to come up and be sold, and you can sell the supplies for the rescue dogs. And I think that there is a dog store, a pet store on North Lake Boulevard where we actually get our pet food from, that actually makes, does quite well doing that because you don't just go in, you don't get the dog. You get the collar, the shampoo, the leash, the food, the, all of the toys and everything. And puppies love toys, so, you know, my puppy had about 15 toys that we didn't play with anymore because she's an adult dog. But this is a difficult thing for me because I don't like government regulation, but, you know, sometimes you have to regulate things. And we don't allow the sale of cars in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. I didn't know if you know that, but we don't allow car lots in Palm Beach Gardens. And I'm afraid that for the protection of consumers, that we should not allow the sale of dogs. I guess one thing that bothered me, it sounded like either getting your dog at a pet store or you're getting your dog from rescue. There are a lot of private breeders, and I found a lot of private breeders right here in Palm Beach County. A lot of them very, very close here. So you do have lots of choices on the different dogs that you can get. As I said, I got an English Springer Spaniel from North Florida, which is not a common dog. You don't find them generally in pet stores. You know, but, uh, you know, certainly every person that I know that has gotten a dog from this breeder had a great experience, 100% great experience. So I'm gonna join you, Eric.
Marcy?
This is a very tough, um, topic because we've heard a lot of very emotional testimony from both sides of this issue. I truly appreciate everybody's comments on both sides of the issue. I agree that puppy mills should be dealt with on a state level. Obviously, that's something that we're not on the state level, but we can talk to our representatives accordingly. I agree with a lot of your comments. I have done research. I spoke with several breeders. I've spoke with many people, residents of the city of Palm Beach Gardens and the county, asking them, doing an informal poll survey to see what their comments are, so I don't make a decision in a box, per se. I do, uh, do, do think that dogs and cats are not an agricultural commodity, and I agree with you.
Joe?
Well, you know, you see us go through a lot of motions up here. We sit here and we vote this, ordinance, move second, all this other kind of stuff. But you really, there's only one job we have to do here, and that is to protect the people that we work for. I would love to be able to regulate this. I don't like putting business people out of business. I mean, that's where I was basically coming from, but there's no way to do it. There's just no way to do it. And the lady that stood up there, the doctor with the daughter with the memorial and so forth, she talked about dollars and cents. But the emotions shine through that dollars and cents. You know, there's money, and then there's emotion, and there's things that sometimes it's very difficult to get beyond. If I can't regulate something and make sure that can't happen, I don't want it here in this city. That's not what this city's about. I would love to be able to do something different, but that one little girl that got attached to that little puppy and had to see it die, I can't live with that.
Well, I guess to summarize everybody, it's basically gonna be voting for this tonight. And I'm with Joe with regards to the regulation issues. We've talked about many a times trying to figure out a way to do it, and it's just not feasible. And we have to protect our residents. We have to protect their interests. And it's not an easy decision. And I credit all 31 of you who came up here tonight to talk about the issue either way. It's not an easy thing to do. And I feel for both sides of your arguments and your fight that you'll continue to do with regards to opening up another store somewhere else or dealing with the puppy mills on a state or federal level, which is a bigger argument that we don't really want to get involved in, nor should we. Those are for other people to decide, try to regulate, and better the environment for those dogs that eventually will go out to stores somewhere else and be sold. So I will also vote for this tonight. And before we take a vote and the decision, I would appreciate no clapping. If you want to stand and walk out cordially, I'd appreciate that. You've been very good up to this point. Please don't run it for yourselves on either side. It's, I'm very, I'm very impressed with the way everybody acted tonight. It's not usually not like that when there's some heavy topics or issues that we're talking about. It gets a little out of hand. But I respect both sides, and thank you for coming here tonight. So with that, I'll bring it back up for...
I'd just like to make one comment to the store owners. This is your industry. You need to get it fixed. I mean, you need to make sure that there's government regulations there to protect you and the consumers. This unfortunately is a bad situation for you, but you all, I issue you the challenge to get active with fellow store owners. Make sure there's laws in the state, make sure there's laws in the federal government so that this doesn't happen. That would be the win-win here.
Very well said. Thank you. Joe, um, okay, I'll bring it up for any other discussion.
Joe, there are regulations placed. They aren't enforced. The USDA doesn't have a mandatory...
There's ways to do that anyway.
All right, I'll close the discussion and bring it back up for a vote.
Mr. Chairman, move ordinance 11, 2014 on second reading and adoption.
Second. You got a motion, second. On the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pass this 5-0. Thank you. Take a five-minute recess. All right, let's move on to Resolution 38, 2014. Will the court read the title?
Resolution 38, 2014, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, adopting a proposed maximum millage rate for the City of Palm Beach Gardens for the fiscal year 2014, 2015, setting the date, time, and place of the first budget hearing, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Okay, staff presentation. Alan?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Alan Owens, Finance Administrator. Resolution 38, 2014. This really is the first step in our annual budget process. This is the time where we have to notify the property praiser of our maximum proposed millage rate for next year and also the date and time for the first public hearing. For fiscal year 2014, '15, we are proposing a maximum operating rate of 5.7404. That is the same as the current year's operating rate. And our debt service millage proposed would be .1615, which is down slightly. The total proposed maximum millage would be 5.9019. That is slightly less than the current year's total rate of 5.9137. Based upon the final property value numbers that we received, the proposed maximum rate would be about 6.1% above the rollback rate for next year. Again, as you know, this is the maximum operating rate during the public hearings. We could lower the rate, but it cannot be raised. In addition, as I said, we have to notify the county property praiser the date of the first public hearing. It cannot conflict with dates for the school board and the county hearings, which you see before you. So staff recommends the first public hearing be held on September 3, September 3, 2014. And staff recommends approval of Resolution 38, 2014.
Any questions, staff?
Just a quick thing. When we originally discussed it, it was September 4, but we're changing it to September 3.
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Rowntree.
The...
It was a last-minute scheduling conflict, so we didn't make that one change with you individually.
Which is a Wednesday night rate.
Yes, correct.
Any questions, staff?
Yeah, you should announce that at the next meeting so that everybody knows the following meeting is in, you know, on Wednesday. Alan, one thing, though, when you bring back the budget or whatever, and I know you're gonna prepare the budget and so forth, you know, I want to know what that number of capital that, you know, we're trying to catch up and fix the things and so forth. Because at some point, I know we're saying we're gonna have a flat rate, and I'd really like to see the rate go down. So, I mean, so if I know how much we got to play with, I mean, this year that we're gonna have to spend to do catch up, then we know how much maybe we could look at.
And we are finalizing a few, a few adjustments right now as we speak to the budget. But when you do receive the budget, the line item budget, there'll be a detailed memo attached to it. That'll be very clear where the additional money is going to different specific areas, whether it's infrastructure, additional repair and maintenance, or contractual. It'll be very clear.
But some of it's gonna be normal capital that we would be spending, and some of it we're doing because we didn't do it where we're supposed to. I'd just like to know that number.
Yes, it'll be spelled out.
Okay, great, thank you.
Budget will be coming out very soon.
Great, thank you.
Comments? I have one card. Iris Schibl?
Good evening, or good night, Mayor, Council. Iris Schibl, 1029 Sienna Oaks. I'd like to start with the detail behind the resolution states. The detailed proposal line item budget will be distributed to council on the Budget Oversight Committee under separate cover. And as Mr. Rowntree said, it sounds like you haven't received a copy yet, nor have I or anyone else who would have wanted to comment on it, yet you're setting a maximum millage. So I think it's difficult for anyone who would want to comment to give any amount of detail and say, I mean, how are you even setting a max millage? For a couple of years now, you've complimented yourselves on not raising or planning to raise the millage, otherwise known as the property tax rate. However, as those who pay property taxes know, that isn't what they see when they look at their property tax term notices. I know that the intent tonight is just to set the max millage, but should you ultimately go with a proposed rate, many will see their tax increase of over 6% because their property values have gone up. Have their incomes gone up by that amount? Have their savings? I think not, but food, gas, and other expenses certainly have. I challenge you to give relief to the city's taxpayers and aim for rollback, or at least set a maximum proposed millage by splitting the difference somewhere and not just automatically assuming the max so that you're not reaping a windfall from the increased valuations. Thank you.
Thank you, Iris. Okay, any other comments up here? No discussion? All right, I'll make it on for a motion.
You're gonna have to help me out, Alan. Do you have a proposed, do you have a stacks on this? Because I'm gonna make a resolution. I make a motion to pass Resolution 38, 2014, adopting a maximum millage rate of 5.7404.
5.7404.
Operating rate.
For operating and a debt service of...
.1615.
.165. A total net millage rate of 5.9019, which is less than the current year total rate of 5.9137. And setting the first budget hearing to take place on September 3 at 7:00 PM.
Correct.
Here in the chambers.
Correct.
All right, good.
Okay, got a couple seconds?
Don't you set the second one also?
No, we don't have to set. This is just strictly for the... No, we don't have to set. This is just strictly for the proposed taxes that goes out. That only notifies the taxpayers of the first-
The first one of the first meeting.
Second.
Okay, thank you. Okay, motion, couple seconds. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Next up is Resolution 46, 2014. Will the clerk read the title?
Resolution 46, 2014, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the appointment of regular and alternate members to the public places' advisory board, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recommend that we make motion to pass Resolution 46, 2014, with names Karen Blum, Chuck Miller, Robert Koo, and Eileen Gerber, to fill these vacant positions on the AIPB.
You have a motion, a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Next up, Resolution 47, 2014. Will the clerk read the title?
Resolution 47, 2014, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving the appointment of second alternate member to the Planning, Zoning, and Appeals Board, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Okay. PZ, who's doing it?
I'll make a recommendation. So you hear, what is it? A motion, I make a motion to pass Resolution 42, 2014.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven. Oh, gosh, reading the wrong one. With the recommendation of Carlos Sabatello to be the alternate member of the PZ.
Second.
Motion, second. Got discussion?
Yeah, well, one bit of discussion, Mr. Mayor, being it's Mr. Sabatello. Mr. Sabatello is a client in my office. I am going to abstain on this resolution, and I'll vote on it. And for the record, I didn't even know until yesterday that he was even made an application. I just want to be transparent about that and so forth, and I will not vote for it, even though our city attorney said that it's not a really conflict issue. I just feel better about it.
Okay, fair enough. We got a motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes four zero. Next up is Resolution 48, 2014. Will the clerk read the title?
Resolution 48, 2014, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, calling a special issue referendum election, requesting the supervisor of elections to place the Palm Beach Gardens needs term limits, PBG NTO, Political Committees Ballot Questions, on the November 4, 2014, general election ballot, contingent upon all statutory and procedural preconditions, having been satisfied for such placement in accordance with Section 166.031 Florida statutes, appointing the supervisor of elections or designate the city clerk or designate and the deputy city clerk or designate as additional members of the City of Palm Beach Gardens canvassing board, requesting supervisor of elections or designate to canvas all absentee ballots, to canvass the municipal questions along with the city's canvassing board, and to conduct the logic and accuracy testing for all election machinery, requesting the supervisor of elections to conduct the city's issue referendum election, authorizing the city clerk to do all things necessary to oversee the city's issue referendum election, providing an effective date for the purposes.
Okay, the presentation, please.
Mr. Mayor, council members, we've all been following the continuing saga between the supervisor of election and the City of Palm Beach Gardens, and the way it's been covered regarding how to get this particular issue on the ballot, should it be successful. There have been a couple of legal opinions from the supervisor of elections attorney and our own city attorneys, which are in conflict. The time is drawing close to when the deadline is being set by the supervisor of elections to place something on the ballot, should it be successful. So in my direction, the city attorney put the resolution together to protect the integrity of the process. It's not intended to take a side or a position. It is merely protecting the process as dictated by the supervisor of election, that it has to be an ordinance or a resolution before she would entertain any initiative referendum for the November ballot. So the city attorney has put together a resolution to that objective. In the event that the petition drive is unsuccessful and certificates are not certified, will not go on the ballot, and those provisions are being made in this resolution. But should they be successful and deemed certified, this is a request for the supervisor of election to place this on the ballot for the November election, merely protecting the process.
Okay. Any questions, staff? Marcy.
Kind of, but it's more of a question and then I guess a comment. I guess first, I don't understand why all of a sudden we have to approve a resolution to ask the SOE to put an item on the ballot that did not originate from the council. Further, we've never had to do that before, nor have we ever been requested to do that before. Am I correct in saying that?
That's correct.
Yes.
Not that I've been here a long time, but since I've been here, the elections that we've had. Nonetheless, they're asking us, I guess, then to pass a resolution requesting these two questions be placed on the ballot. I have no issues, of course, with the first question. However, I would encourage the PAC to change the time, but I guess we're not talking about content or language. We're just talking about the process, correct?
Correct.
You can talk about anything you want to. I'm not talking about content. I'm merely trying to preserve the process as dictated by the SOE.
Right. Because I do have a real problem with the retroactive question, and morally don't agree with the content of the second question, because I feel it's unconstitutional to create a law that applies to what has happened in the past. However, I can just encourage the PAC to not put that on the ballot, should they wish not to put it on the ballot, if they meet all the criteria. Is that possible?
No, they can't. They already got a petition that's signed.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
But nonetheless, I guess therefore, I have to go on the record by saying that. But because I strongly support our democratic system, I therefore am happy to put it on the ballot and let the voters decide. Should they qualify, of course.
And something I've been preaching about for a long time is that at some point in time, some city council has to do a charter review committee. It's in our charter. It's supposed to be done. I talked about it four months ago, and everybody's saying, we're going to bring it back, we're going to bring it back, and it's still not back.
I'm ready to talk about it. We can bring it back. Why don't we talk about it at the next council? Maybe we can put it on the agenda and let's talk about it.
That's fine. I think we should do it in September when we're all here.
Are you here?
In September, yes.
Oh, because the other ones are. Okay, that's fine.
In September, the five of us are going to be here at that first meeting. So I think that's when we should do it. And I'm very simple about it. I mean, I think we should be appointing a five-member committee, and they should be going out to the public, and they should be deciding, because the question, the term limits, retroactive, whether it should be six years, nine years, 12 years, three years, that's something for them to get together with the residents, have the communication, have the discussion. That's the way we've always changed the charter, and that just needs to be done. Because term limits is only, what do you mean?
Last time you said to hire a company.
Yeah, but no, I'm saying, I'm saying you might want to hire a company to, it's like when you have a charrette, you know, you hire somebody to come in.
Facilitate.
Facilitate.
Facilitate, that's the word, a facilitator.
Hey, Joe, can we talk about, we can talk about this under items for council discussion, but why don't we just go ahead and get this thing?
Yeah, fine, okay.
Yeah, I mean-
Good, okay, I'm ready.
There's no secret I'm against all this, but I certainly am not against the democratic process. If they get the signatures and they can certify them, it's my understanding that the SOE is requiring us to do this in order to put it on the ballot. And so I'm not going to stand in the way of the democratic process, even if I don't agree with the content of it.
As long as we're not putting it on the ballot.
We're not putting it on the ballot.
No, they're putting it on the ballot.
They're putting it on the ballot.
So with that, I'll make a motion.
Oh, Doug, I got two comment cards, so.
Oh, okay.
Doug, you're back up again, sir.
Thank you.
Name and address, please.
Doug Freevert, still on 10187 Dechino. I came here tonight to speak on the Church of the Gardens, to find out whether I was going to have a sidewalk to nowhere on my street, perhaps the only private residential street to have a sidewalk in the City of Palm Beach Gardens. I do hope you got rid of it. But this came up too, and I want to thank Mr. Ferris for preserving the process, and hope that all of you will vote to preserve the process with this resolution. Thank you.
Thanks for waiting, Doug. Iris, Shible.
Iris Shible, 1029 Sienna Oaks. I'm sure that citizen-initiated referendums aren't common in the city, so that's why this hasn't been challenged quite in the same way before. And so timelines and requirements between multiple municipalities and the supervisor of elections can be difficult to determine, especially because every city has a different charter, some of which you're already talking about. So I want to thank Mr. Lowen and Mr. Ferris for putting the resolution on the agenda, even if you disagreed with what the supervisor of elections attorney position was, because, again, we need the process to go forward. And if you didn't vote for this, then should the petitions, you know, it's up to the PAC to be able to get sufficient petitions, but if they do, and then suddenly we're in August 28th or the end of June or July, and you're saying, sorry, it can't go on the ballot, and we're still fighting this, then that's not doing the will of the people, or at least the 10% who would have signed it. Our city charter is clear in describing what citizens must do as far as the petitions, but there's definitely room for differing opinions, as we saw, on what has to happen to get something on the ballot. And the wording doesn't specifically say citizens initiated versus council initiated, but does say you need to have a resolution or a ordinance. So I would ask that the appropriate sections of the charter be flagged for modification during the charter review to make clear any such differentiation on citizen-initiated ballot questions. So I'm in agreement with what you're saying as terms of a charter review. Thank you.
Thanks, Iris. Okay, I'll bring it back up for discussion. Any other discussion? Any motion?
Move Resolution 48, 2014.
Motion, second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Passes five zero. Next up, we have the city manager evaluation. Sorry, Kevin, you're going to have to wait a little bit longer for the gas station stuff. Who wants to start? David, you want to start? We'll start with you this time.
Okay, are we doing the evaluation now? Okay, so verbal evaluation? Well, it's kind of funny. I think I started it at the beginning of the meeting, when I was complimenting our police department, our fire department, our explorers, our finance department, our everything. And this city seems to be well-run, and we're doing it at one of the lowest aggregate tax rates in this county. You know, I think it's important to remember, we don't pay a electric tax, which is kind of neat when you have an electric car, but that's another story. But we don't pay, we pay the lowest communication service tax, even though that was controversial a couple of years ago. It's the lowest in the county. We pay a relatively low milit rate. We do not pay any MTSUs, which a lot of municipalities like Boca Raton has a very low milit rate. But what you don't realize is they have a couple of MTSUs that they put in there. So their milit rate is actually quite a bit higher than the one that you see on paper. So with all that, with the services that we get, that the tax rate that we get, I think that the city is going in the right direction. And our finance department has been phenomenal. I mean, absolutely phenomenal. I really feel spoiled up here, because, you know, this staff makes my job so easy because of the things that they do. And the reason why all that happens, I know I've kind of gone around the bush to get there, is because of the leadership at the top, the person that hires everybody, the person that oversees everybody, the person that makes sure that the incentives are here and that the morale is good. You know, that's the guy running the show that makes us look good. And that comes down to Ron Ferris. And Ron, I believe, has done the things that we have asked him to do on a gross basis, but also on the fine basis. When I call up and I have questions, they get answered. Maybe not right then, because some research has to be done, but the research is done. When an issue comes up with a citizen, then they've asked me to intervene on their behalf, and I call Ron, it gets done. It gets answered, and the citizens get the answers. Might not be the answers that they're looking for, but they get answers. And that's very important. The responsiveness of our government is very good. And I know sometimes the wheels of government move slow. I see Mike Martino still in the audience, and I know that Steve brought up some code enforcement things. I recognize a couple of those places are already in code enforcement. You know, I know we've gotten a lot of, I know you and I have, because we go by it every day, the burned-down house on Holly, but it's in code enforcement. I know those wheels work slowly, but everybody's, you know, in the United States is given due process, and that has been preserved too, which is also important. So I try and look for, you know, at this time, to look for aspects of where the city could use some improvement in everything. And I always believe that you can always improve, but I think that over the last 10 years I've been on this council, that we've been going in the right direction. And interestingly enough, the milit rate today is lower than when I started 10 years ago. So with that, you know, Ron, I give you very good marks with the way that the city is going. I'm very happy with the way that the city is going. I would encourage you to continue going in the same way, and continue being as responsive as you have been.
Thank you. Marcy?
Okay, first, I want to say, kind of reiterate in a way, that the city overall is run very well. We are in fiscally in great shape, and we have an excellent stellar staff and department heads, which I do appreciate. And I know that has a lot to do with hiring them, so I appreciate that. I have a weekly meeting with you, Ron, which gives me the opportunity to review your performance on a weekly basis. And I have exercised that right, and will continue to do so as we progress through our meetings. For example, I've made you aware that I feel that the administration needs to be more open and transparent and communicate with the public more. We just finished a very tough election cycle, and that was one of the topics, a very popular topic, I might add, during that process, which made it apparent. One example is bringing up the non-resident fee change at our last RAV, RAV, GYAA joint meeting, so no one was blindsided. And we asked you to pull it, and you did pull it, and I appreciate that. I feel we can do public workshops in the future to help with that issue or to get over that challenge of communication. And I'm glad to see that you've taken that comment and actually put it into action at the P&amp;Z workshop last night, which I did Tuesday night, sorry, the days are running together, which you did do. And I felt that that was a good benefit. It was good to hear everybody's comments, and I think it's helpful to staff to hear those comments as well. So I appreciate you taking those comments and putting them into action, which you did for the P&amp;Z workshop. Another example is our RFP, RFQ process. I believe it was, I don't know if it was last meeting or the meeting before, I asked that the backup material be put on the agenda, because I didn't see it, and you very quickly and responded, in my opinion, the appropriate way. And as soon as you realized that it wasn't there, or I brought it to your attention, that I was not happy that it was not on the agenda, you immediately made sure that it was corrected that night, in fact, which was after hours, and you made sure that the entire public saw that backup material the same day that I saw it on the agenda. So I do appreciate the fact that you were reactive to the comments in such a timely manner. As I stated, the city has been run well. We have an excellent staff, as I said, and I think we just need to continue to work on communication, which we've started doing better. We've done it in the past, but I think we can always improve on things, and that's one thing that we can improve on. None of us are perfect, so there's always room for improvement with, I know myself and others. So I appreciate the extra work to work on public relations in the future.
Joe?
I always look at, you know, you look at the city, you look at the good things that happened last year, and you look at the bad things. And you look at what Ron's done with, you know, last year, we- And you look at what Ron's done with, you know, last year, we signed a police contract that everybody knows, the previous contract, we went to impasse. And Ron was able to fix that, get them back to the table. As you know, we had to go to impasse, because there was things that we needed to fix. I think our police pension is like 77% funded now, up from the 40s. Our fire is like over 70 now, 77 for the police, right? 71 police, 77 fire? Okay, well, my point is, is it used to be in the 40s. And, you know, he made the difficult decisions. Ron is a great business manager, and you have to understand that in business, there's two types of business people. There's the entrepreneur, okay, and there's the business person. You never want to have the entrepreneur running the business of the company, because they're going to fly, you know, they're just going to go and do things and promote and constantly promote and so forth. Ron isn't that guy. He's the opposite guy. He's the business man. You know, as bad as the baseball thing was, and we were criticized for the way it was handled, and I guess if you're going to criticize, you'd have to criticize Ron for the way it was handled. And I think now, you got to appreciate the way he handled it, because he never wanted to go to residence until he had something to go to with, which we now know today, he could have never gotten, just like the county hasn't gotten, because the numbers don't work. He didn't try and force the numbers. He waited for the numbers to be right to go to the residence. Unfortunately, Mr. Crane made a comment in newspapers saying, "We're 90-some-odd percent there, and it's going to be approved and so forth." You know, and that's what created the disaster that we had. Everybody thought that we were hiding things, and we had deals done, and that Ron was doing his own thing. Well, Ron was doing his own thing. He was doing his own thing to bring us a contract that would be good to even look at. And he didn't want to go to residence to talk about it until he knew he had something to talk about. So like I said, even as bad as that was, and again, you know, as bad as it was, I'd like to be able to criticize somebody for it, but I can't even do that. Sometimes things just happen, and there's no way for you to control what happens. It just happens. And there was no way for anyone to control Mr. Crane. That got out there, and that was, and I will tell you that that hurt our city for a long time. And it still probably has some effects, because there's people that think that we had a deal and all this stuff, and we weren't transparent and so forth. And it just was unfortunate that it happened that way. But I can't, like I said, if there was anything I could tell them to do different, I don't know that I could tell them, because again, right now, the county's struggling with numbers. I guess they're at 120. Ron said he had to be at 100. The 120 is going, yeah, going higher a lot quicker. But the point is, is that he didn't bring us something based on glue and things and putting things together. And Ron, I thank you for that. I thank you for that. I thank you for running this city in the manner that you do, for the business. I thank you for taking my phone calls and listening to me, not blowing me off. There's a lot of people that'll listen and not listen, but you do. But you do, and I appreciate that. I think you've put a great staff together, and, you know, I'd just like to see it keep on going as long as it can keep on going. It's going to be here, you'll be here beyond me, but, you know, so we'll see. But anyway, I have no, I think you did a great job, and I think the star on the resume is the police contract and the pensions. It's great where you put together with the city, maintaining the rate and getting everybody to where it needed to be. And, you know, Ron, not everybody likes you for that. But we like you. You did what you had to do. Well, we told you what to do, and you went and did it, so we appreciate that.
Eric?
You know, a lot of people don't realize how Ron came to the city. He didn't come here to stay, actually. He came here to be an interim manager when we had trouble with a manager preceding him and who actually put us into debt, way into debt. And Ron came on as a, an interim manager. You remember that, don't you, Joe? And, well, we're the only two on the council who remember that. It was painful.
Exactly. Right, you two.
Yeah, well, yeah, it was very painful. It really was. But...
See, that's the one thing that term limits has got to do away with.
Yeah.
Because there'll never be anybody that will know that when you create a budget, if you create an income item for 3.5 million, an expense item for 3.5 million, you could still spend the expense even though you didn't get the revenue.
Spoken like a true accountant.
I always thought it was, I always thought it was against the law to overexpend the budget. Now, when we weren't going to buy the, that's what, I don't want to even go there.
Well, anyway, he came as an interim manager. He never intended to stay, and he did such a great job in those six months that we asked him to stay. We said, "Hey, look, you know, you're doing a great job. Come on, stay here." And I'm glad he did, because if he hadn't, I don't know what the city would be like. He has put together a great staff. His staff is very loyal to him, because they respect him. They respect him for the kind of manager he is. And I respect him for the kind of person he is. I mean, I've known Ron now a long time, and I have very good and hard-working relationship with him, and I appreciate everything he does for this city, because he makes us all look good. He really does. And we all know in election time, that's important, right? But truthfully, this is a very well-run city, and it's basically that way, because the staff is stellar, and it's because he hired them, and he runs them very well, and they respect him. So I would like to continue his tenure here, for as long as he'd like to be here. I don't know, you know, you want to make your comments? I would like to make a suggestion as to his contract. I don't know if it's appropriate at this moment, but why don't you say what you want to say, you know?
Well, my comments kind of echo what everybody else here said, in terms of what we created here as far as a staff and a culture and the way we handle ourselves. But I just do bullet points. I think it's simpler. I think Ron has excellent reporting to the city council in a timely manner, prepares a realistic annual budget, and keeps the city council informed about revenues and expenses, actual and projected. Written communications are clear and precise, and the amount of work performed is probably three times what I do in a week, and Joe will attest to that, I'm sure, so as a banker. Yeah, maybe 10 times more a week, so. So I appreciate all those efforts. And in going forward, I think there are some challenges for next year, which I think I'll evaluate next year as we get into it, but certainly the fire contract negotiations next year are going to be dubious at best, and I think Ron will obviously be on the right side of that in the end, and we'll have to either support him or find some common ground to get that done. Parks and Recreation facilities and expansion, it's always going to be a topic, I think, going forward in the city, because we're just running out of space. So we're going to have to continue to have that on the front burner and see what we can do, either in conjunction with the county or some other project. Infrastructure and improvements, maintenance and repairs, as Steve Martino mentioned earlier. I think that's important in our city, to keep the whole city up to a nice standard. And I live in that area as well, and I think we need to, you know, focus on that. If we can code-enforce it all day and write up issues on it, but if people don't have money, or they don't, not making their mortgage payments, and, you know, how do we fight that battle? I don't know. We're trying to get the house burned down on Holly. We've talked about that several times and gotten pictures this week from a resident. We're still trying to work on that, but when you have an insurance company and a mortgage company, and the owner can't get on the same page to get the project going, but the funds are there, all we can do is put stickers on the door and try to find them and get it moving, and we're trying to do that. So trust me, I drive through that neighborhood every day, and I wish we could do more, and maybe we can with some revenue projects that are coming in, in terms of taxes and revenue. So we'll look to do that. We'll look to Ron. And Marcy had a good point about transparency. I heard enough of it. I'm tired of it. I think the city is very transparent, but we're going to be more transparent, and we're going to get things on the website, we're going to get things in the paper, we're going to talk about Panama Hatties, if that comes into the city. We're going to talk about Avenir. We're going to talk about Scripps. We're going to talk about Brigger. We're going to talk about every damn thing you want to talk about, and we're going to make it so known on our website and so known in this council, that if residents don't pay attention, I'm not going to blame this council or staff, because they didn't hear about it, or they don't know what's going on. I mean, it's hard to not know what's going on in the city. But we're going to make it more known and more transparent, and we're going to put those things to bed and make sure everybody in the city knows what's going on. And whether you like it or not, that's your opinion. That's our vote. That's what we'll have to deal with. But I think people need to pay attention more, but we're going to give them more information and more data to work on. And I think Marcy's kind of taken the stand on that with regards to supporting data and information, and I think we all basically should do that. Everybody should be able to read something and make a decision on it, and speak up here three minutes about it, and then we'll vote on it. I don't want anybody being surprised in the city about a building going up and we didn't know about it, or CVS going up on Northlake, the construction on the building, the gas station on Northlake. I mean, these things that, they're transparent, they're out there, but if we need to communicate a little bit better, we're going to try to work on doing that. I don't know how we do it, but we're going to. And I think that's one of the issues we can do a little bit better, and Ron and staff, I'm sure, will support that effort and get it out there and be responsive to the citizens, who at the organizational chart in our audit report are at the top. So we're going to try to address issues as they come in. And as Marcy said, or somebody else said, it might not be the right answer. They want to hear, but we're going to get them an answer. We're going to try to live within our codes and our merits on how we do things, and then we'll move forward. So that's the comments I have. But again, the challenges next year, Ron, there are four or five of them, and we'll support you, and we'll move forward on those and see what we can get done, just keep the city moving in the right direction. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that was very well said, and I think we all expressed our concerns about the future, but I think we're really solidly behind our leader in the administration, and that's Ron Ferris. So with that, I'm going to make a motion to extend city manager's employment contract for two additional years until June 1st, 2018, under the same terms and conditions, and authorize the mayor to execute saying.
Can we have a motion and a second?
We can discuss.
I would like to discuss.
Blood discussion. Do we have a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Let's open it up for discussion.
I'd like to see the contract. I mean, it's been a while. I'd like to see the contract, and I'd like to have, you know, I don't know, I think we all should meet with the city attorney, review the contract, and if there's any issues in there, we should look at it. In fact, the original contract was signed, I don't know how many years ago.
Well, okay.
Good points. I agree.
We've been renewing that particular contract.
Just so you know, I have no problem extending the contract. I think that's a great thing, and I think that, and I think the other issue as it relates to that is, we need to have our attorney, which is also Max Lowman, have a discussion with Mr. Ferris on when he plans to retire, because I don't want to just not have a city manager here. You know, I mean, we need some, you know, some planning, so that somebody can come in, and we all like him, we all like his style, and I would hope that the next city manager would be the same way. And it would be a lot better to have that person here to work under Ron for a couple of years before Ron leaves. So I fully agree with that, Eric. I have no problem with extending, as long, I just want to look at the contract and...
My concerns, I'll be very transparent about it, is that I don't know what's going to happen with this referendum. I really don't. No one, none of us know. And if things happen that could wipe out this council, basically, we need somebody at the helm that will be able to continue to work with a new council if that happens.
Yeah, but the other problem is, I don't, I can't put that new council under someone they don't want to work with. That's the other concern.
That's up to them.
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
It's up to us to continue to...
People, what I'm saying is that, you know, you can't burden, if the voters vote, and the whole thing changes and so forth, and the new people that get here decide they want somebody else, it's there.
Then they do. But we are the elected officials now, and we control what's happening now. And while we're in control, I think we need to have a say in what happens to the city going forward.
We also have to protect our city manager, that if somebody comes in, that he just can't be...
Remember, Ron is an at-will employee. I assume that the contract would not be changed, so if a new city council did come in in a few years, they would be able to fire Ron, because he's an at-will employee.
It's not at-will, you got a contract.
You got a contract, you got to pay him out of that contract.
You have to pay him a severance fee, but they can let him go any time.
No, 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 just one year.
One year. Those are the terms.
See, that's why we all need to get the contract.
We need to see that contract.
So if you will accept an amendment to the motion, can we authorize the city attorney, who is our employee, to draft a contract using the same terms that in the previous contract?
Better for all of us to get a copy of the contract, review the contract, and then have a discussion with him.
Before we get to the contract, we're not done with discussion, so are you all basically done with your comments? Okay. Marcy?
I tend to agree with Joe on this. I think that we have plenty of time to discuss this. I think it needs to be on the agenda. I think it needs to be something that's on the agenda that we vote on, so that it's done and being transparent. I also think that we have to review. I don't feel comfortable voting on something that I don't even haven't read, I don't understand right now at this moment in time, and I would like to wait and table any motion, for that matter, in regards to a contract, until I see something, until I have a chance to review it, until I have a chance to talk to Max about it. And I think we have plenty of time. Two years is, I think, is when it's, I think, is when it's expired.
16 is what it expires.
And we have some time. It's not going to, it's not something that we have to do today.
Okay.
I don't want to wait six months. I mean, I...
I don't want to wait a long time.
I'd like to see it brought back.
The city manager has to make decisions of his...
September, we got the budget. Let's do it at the first meeting in October. That'll give us plenty of time, review the contract, talk to the attorney, and get it all set up.
I'm okay with talking about it in October.
I don't think that's right either.
Well, that's, you know...
Okay.
Well, you know, no one has heard from this man. He just said something out of emotion, okay? And, well, first of all, I don't, I don't think it's termal.
It's just two people haven't read the, don't even know what the contract says, and for them to vote to extend something, they don't even know what it says. I mean, that's...
Yeah, I've never seen it. And, you know, and I, I would like to see, you know, we haven't even talked about a succession plan, so if we extend his contract, you know, we need to have some sort of succession plan in place for somebody under him, who could learn under him for 12 or 24 months to take over that role as he leaves. So you want to go out and just interview and hire somebody like North Palm, and they leave every six months? Or have contentions? In other cities, when they promote internally and it doesn't work out, I don't want that. I want to, I want to have somebody who essentially can be an understudy for him and work for him, and know the city in and out, as when he retires, whatever that date might be, that that person can take over, and we're comfortable with that hiring.
I agree with you 100%. I mean, the county is going through that right now with, they have tons of people that are retiring at the same time, and I don't want to put our city in a position where their health, their leader is, doesn't have experience and doesn't have the knowledge of our city. So I think it's important that we discuss that.
But putting this off until October does not, from what I understand, work for our city manager's future plans. And I think, I think we owe it to him to give him a decision in an expedited way, as soon as we can. And I don't think that doing it at the next council meeting is so terrible. It gives everybody an opportunity in the next four weeks.
The only problem is, we're not going to be here in the next council meeting.
And our state is not going to be here in October.
Well, actually, my planes end up changing, so I will be, why don't we do it on the first, first council meeting in September? I know it's a budget meeting.
After we review the contract and have discussions?
That's fair.
Yeah, do it, let's do it as soon as is possible. The other thing is, I guess we just need to...
I didn't think there was any sense of urgency. That's why I said October. That's all. Do September anyway.
September's fine.
Okay, is that agreeable with everybody?
You got any other comments?
Well, we have a motion before that we probably have to withdraw at this point.
Okay.
I'll withdraw my second.
Oh, your second? Okay, motions withdrawn for now. We'll get with Max, review the contract, and any discussions we want to have about succession or other planning, and we'll put in there as well and talk about it.
Okay.
All right.
Let's move on to the gas station signage. Do we have something on that now?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Natalie Groley, this is an item for council discussion. As many of you are aware, in April of this year, the Palm Beach County Board of County Commissioners adopted an ordinance called the Palm Beach Motor Vehicle Fuel Price Posting Ordinance, which provided for specific postings for a discount or cash prices to be specifically listed, as you see before you. Essentially requires gas stations to prominently and continuously display the specific signage indicating the type of fuel available for sale in six-inch letters. It requires, as I mentioned, the discount price or cash-only price be displayed at that same minimum six-inch and be prominently displayed. The changes come into effect one year from the date of this ordinance. It is a county-wide ordinance, and the county is enforcing this ordinance. But, and we are, we are subject, because of that, we are subject to that ordinance today. So we are, we are under that ordinance today. The city does have the option to opt out and adopt an ordinance in conflict, should the city wish to do that. So this is an item for council discussion. This background is being presented to you for that discussion. And should you decide to pass an ordinance in conflict, we would schedule that as a separate ordinance on a separate agenda. Thank you.
Can I ask you a question with regards to the ordinance that was approved? Are they saying that they have to put cash and credit prices on their signage? How does this work? Just give me a little definition here.
The ordinance requires the gas stations to display the letters, no matter what the content is, at a minimum six-inch. And should gas stations, if they choose to display the cash discount price, it has to be located adjacent to the regularly posted price, and it has to be prominent, that is the language in the ordinance, prominently displayed. They have to post both prices.
If they, if they're advertising a cash discount. They have the option to not advertise the cash discount and just display their normal debit card or credit card price, and then there's no impact. What it does is it requires, if they're giving a cash discount, to display that and make sure that it's prominent, so that it's explained. So you don't see a lower price than when you put your card in the pump, it turns on, then it's a higher price.
Yeah, so if there are two prices, they have to post two. If there's only one price, if cash and credit are the same, they post one.
Or if they're just not even advertising the cash price. Even if they're giving a cash price discount, if it's not advertised, if they've advertised their, their normal...
Their higher price.
Their higher price, then it's no issue.
Right now, they're advertising the cash price, and then...
And you come in and you pay more.
And you come in, and then you realize, maybe after you've pumped your gas, that it's not the cash, it's not the cash price, it's the credit card price. So you don't have an option afterwards. So what they're doing is making you post both prices, so that the consumer knows. And why would we want to be different than everybody else in the county? If someone could make that argument to me?
Why would we, what was your question? Why do we, why would we want to be different from what the county is proposing?
Yeah, why would Palm Beach Gardens not do what the rest of the county is doing?
I guess, are there any cons to doing what the county is proposing? Do we have an issue right now with our signage not being in conflict with this ordinance?
Our signage?
Minus the cash.
There's no conflicts in our sign code, which are in conflict with this ordinance.
I guess the con would be that it's going to cause the gas station owners an expense because they have to
Signage.
Make their sign bigger. They'll probably have to get a new sign.
Cash and...
Yeah, exactly. And that means, you know, a lot, a lot of signage. So most, I would think, a lot of station operators wouldn't have a big enough sign because it also has to be a certain size of letters and everything. Eventually, do we know where the state is on this? Are they going to eventually pass some type of, well, I guess we don't know, some type of legislation that's going to require this?
I know that the ordinance was sent to the state, and it became effective when it was transferred, transmitted to the state.
Is there any litigation involved in this? I mean, presently?
I'm not aware.
And do we give the existing businesses some time to comply now? Should they have a conflict or an issue?
The businesses have one year from the date of the effective ordinance, so it was adopted in April, and so April of the following year, and that will be the date, it's a sunset date essentially, in which businesses are going to be required to comply. And since we are subject to that ordinance, businesses in our city have that time.
That doesn't require us to do anything. If we do nothing...
Correct. If you do nothing, if you do status quo, then they still have that year, that period.
Can we opt out later? Or is it...
Right, right.
So we, we have a year to opt out?
Yes, yes.
That's correct. You can, you can opt out even after the ordinance takes effect. You can opt out at any time. Now or in the future.
If a station owner changed his signs, then you don't, opting out doesn't help them.
Correct.
Yeah, but, well, no, he's not going to change the signs unless he knows who are... I guess my question, Natalie, is I'd be interested in knowing how much it's going to cost the businesses to comply, and whether they're going to be able to comply with, with the regulation and our sign code with a reasonable dollar amount, as opposed to, you know, some... I mean, I don't really know, but I'm just saying, if we brought some...
And it's hard to respond, because each, each business will vary on a case-by-case basis, depending on their, the size of their monument sign, and again, the choice that they have as a business to display both. Because not all gas stations choose to display the cash, the cash...
Why didn't they just allow them to put like a sign on the bottom part and say, "Eight cents discount for cash"?
I can't speak to, you know, what was the thought process behind the decision of...
We could do that.
We had the right to...
We could do that.
But we have to opt out.
Yeah, we'd have to opt out, but we could, we could do that if we wanted to do it that way. But, and it protects the consumer, and it's less costly to...
What I'd like to see, Natalie, you were just getting credit from the PGA Corridor Association about getting together and doing the things. Maybe you should put together a meeting with the local gas station owners in the city and talk to them about a solution that'll protect our residents, along with, you know, in other words, not just having, to have something, but something that protects them so that they'll know, you know, what the prices are or whatever, you know what I mean?
While also keeping in mind that the gas
That's right.
Have to change their signs accordingly.
Know that the county has an ordinance, and we don't want to just say, "Well, we're not going to do it. We don't care what our people do." You know what I mean? It's just...
That's what my point is. Why would we not?
Well, we need to try... Let me throw another wrench into this too, because if you make these signs bigger, they may actually start violating our sign codes.
And that's the other question.
I mean, that, you know, then there would be an issue, because they can't, then they would be conflicting.
If you sell, you know, in some places, I don't know why, they sell four grades of gas and diesel, you're talking about a pretty big sign to list all those prices.
It gets confusing.
It is confusing.
It is confusing.
Okay, let's, let's give Kevin Dalton five minutes up here. Kevin, with the Cliff Notes version of everything.
Okay, and then I have one more question for staff.
Go ahead, please, I can wait.
Okay. Is it possible, like I've seen some signs that are changeable copy, they're electronic, where they'll flash this, the cash price, and it will say cash prominently, and then it will change, and then we'll flash the credit price. Is that going to be...
The ordinance requires a continuous display, and so you wouldn't, through changeable copy, be able to flip that.
Okay, so if we did an opt-out, maybe we can make that an option.
It is an option.
We don't want Las Vegas lights all over our roads, David. Thank you. Kevin, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Natalie, you're fine. Kevin Dalton, I have three gas stations in Palm Beach Gardens. I actually have a lot of answers that Natalie may not have had. First off, the city, I'm sorry, county, I'm going to go back and forth, and I know I'm going to make that mistake a lot. The county is a request, it's a maximum of 15 square feet. Right now, you all give us a four-by-four panel on each side, so that's 16 square feet. So it would actually be smaller for any new signage in the county going forward. And you're right, by the way, what's not on here is that it says that any type of fuel sold. That means all of our grades, which is, makes it a complete cluster of numbers up here, regular plus super diesel, and posting a cash credit price. I would have eight prices and a few car wrecks outside trying to figure my pricing out as they're going by. So this is, and it's very important that I post, just like any other business owner would say, your lowest price. I can't operate on posting a higher price because of competition. For example, Walmart owns their own bank, so they have no credit card fees, and I can't compete against that. And it's, it's very unfortunate that the county took on the task of becoming a consumer watchdog, because that's not their position to do that. If I could say, 70% of our customers use a credit card. 40% of those customers, though, use a free, excuse me, debit card or proprietary shell, Exxon, whatever card. So that brings us back down to about 40%. Less than half the people actually pay the higher price, if you will. All the grades are involved, like we said. A few of us have talked about possibly going back to a middle-of-the-road pricing. Now, the problem there is to post just the one price. The problem is, it's, and I know you all don't want to get involved in this, but it's going to be, a middle-of-the-road is going to give a tax break to the rich and stick it on the middle and poor, that it'll have to pay a higher price because they can't use a credit card. So, and I know you don't want me to be involved in that either. Last month alone, in the month of May, I just happened to go over my P&Ls today, that last, in May, I paid on Northlake, my three gas stations, $35,000 in credit card fees between my three gas stations. They made more off gas than I did, the credit card companies. So the, you all had, there were some other questions. Could you post, repost the black part from the county back up there? Because there were some other things I just wanted to rep, let them know about. Yeah, thank you.
Kevin, was, was the state trying to pass something, and the county beat them to it? Did I, did I beat that?
No, 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 no. That's what, that's what, the county was afraid that they would get beat to the punch, but there is no beat to the punch. If the state comes back and... ...that it would over, it would supersede whatever law they just tried to beat them with, so it's irrelevant there. Let me see, it's a minimum six inches, right? But they also said that the credit price would have to be in bigger letters than the cash price. The changes come into effect one year. That's actually, we believe, we don't even know what that actual date is, because they actually told us it would be when they came around to our gas stations to explain it to us, within 30 days. However, they haven't done that yet. We're going on day 85 right now or so, and the county says they're just about to mail us now instead a list, and also mail Natalie, or, I'm sorry, the city, an update as to actually how to read the, interpret the law, because the law was written very poorly. So, and it is, like you said, county enforced. They led us to believe that Miami, Dave Broward, or Broward was also following this rule, and they are not following the rule, or following their own law because of a lawsuit. And to answer your question, if the law, I can assure you that the group of us will drag this out, unfortunately, for years to come. And we feel that the Department of Agriculture is going to rule in our favor, because right now, it's listed as the Weights and Measurements Department of, Department of Agriculture is the only one that can regulate price signs for gas stations. And there, we feel they're just about to rule and take away this new law that the county has brought on anyway. So we're very confident...
There will be some litigation in order.
We'll, we've already promised the county litigation, if that's the case.
Yeah, that was my reference. The state regulates that they have to, and that's why they're not, that's why they're exempt from our changeable copy laws, because the state regulates those signs.
You asked about costs involved. I just spent at my two gas stations that just you all politely approved for the signage, that was, I spent $24,300 on those two signs, at Northlake and 95 at the Shell, and at the Chevron. And to add on all the panels I would need, would cost me a minimum of $8,000 more for those two. Now, that doesn't include the Sunoco station, but that's, I would have to, that would be an expense I was going to have anyway, coming up at some point. Just a lot larger, because the LED panels to add, to go from two to eight is going to be much more expensive, but it was still an expense I was probably going to incur anyway. But regardless, $25,000 extra, did, I'm sorry, $16,000 extra to come into compliance is crazy. So, because of the new LED panels.
All right, well, let's, let's keep an eye on it, let's monitor it, let's make a decision, I guess.
You made a point about, or somebody made a point about getting a group of gas stations together, and maybe getting with Natalie, whoever. That would be a phenomenal idea. I know we could come up easily with a simple way, like you said, price...
Discount.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
You can make it a percentage, you didn't have to make it a, because...
I just can't post my highest price. It's just not fair. I don't understand, nobody in the country is required to post their highest price rather than lowest price. We don't make, stores post their price with sales tax, you know, they post their lowest price, and, and we're talking about eight or 10 cents. If there are any bad apples out there, and I don't believe there are any in Palm Beach Gardens, I've explained to the county, I would love to go with them and talk to those particular business owners and get them on board, so that those few bad apples, we don't have to have these, the laws that they dreamed up here.
Okay, let's, let's work on some workshop that Joe had mentioned with the corridor and with some of the owners, obviously, the gas stations. The gas stations. And let's have some discussion on that.
Let's let them work with staff to maybe come up with a different sign, signage that would cause us to opt out. But I think Kevin might be right. I think this, I think that the county preempted the state prerogative, and I think the state's going to just say, "Hey, you can't do this. This belongs..."
Well, that's okay, but in the meantime, we can have the workshop, come up with a better situation.
We can still have our workshop.
Then if that lawsuit happens and it does, goes away, we don't have to worry about it, but at least we can have maybe a resolution.
Just in case the state doesn't do that. By the way, just as a point of disclaimer, a long time ago, I worked for that State Department, Bureau of Petroleum Inspection.
You've worked for everybody.
I have, I should work for David.
He's worked everywhere.
Well, I was working my way through college. I was a chemist for the Department for the Agriculture and Consumer Service.
Two things now I got to do. I'm not buying pets. And now I got to check the gas prices. Kevin, I only go to your gas stations because I know you. Now I got to check them.
Right. I may ask a point of clarification?
I have no idea. I don't even know what I pay for gas.
Go ahead, Natalie.
Just a point of clarification, when you mentioned workshop, is, would you like for me to work out and reach out to the PGA Corridor Association and the gas station?
A workshop, we get involved.
But are you looking for a public workshop?
No, just you.
Working with a public...
That, with three or four owners around town that own multiple stations.
It's like you worked on the sign code ordinance with the, with the PGA Card Association, same thing.
And since Kevin's here, we're going to put him in charge of getting all the gas station owners.
Natalie, I do have another question also, which you don't have to answer right now, but when, after you do this meeting with the gas station owners, I would like to also know, would this, if we have to change the signs, or if they have to change the signs, would they have to go through a public hearing process and do the typical notification, which is also pretty costly? You know, the, the whatever, 500-foot notification? And/or could it be done administratively just to add whatever it is that they're going to add? That was another question that I would have.
Okay. I mean, I'm pretty sure I can answer that right now, because essentially, you're subject to this ordinance, so if you want to adopt anything that's different from it, you would have to opt out and re-adopt a separate ordinance. And so it would have to be a public...
No, no, I'm talking about the gas station, shake the signs themselves. Every gas station would then have to come back to a public hearing process for their change because of this new regulation, correct? Or could it be done administratively, because they're meeting something that was a new law? Or could it be done administratively, because they're meeting something that was a new law?
If this law doesn't get challenged, they're going to have, and it goes through. They have a year to comply, and they're going to have to comply.
And again, going back to the copy face, you know, they wouldn't be required to come back for face changes, because it really depends on the content that they would decide to display. So it really depends on each, each of their business models. And so it would be very difficult for me to indicate that. But based on the existing copy face area that these gas stations have, they should be able to comply, but it may not comply with their business model.
As long as the sign meets code, all they need is building permits, right?
They could come back and get administratively approved through staff and through building to get the, to change their sign faces, because our sign face, our square footage exceeds the county's, so...
Be able to...
That's what I didn't realize.
When you're working within your copy face, all you're doing is changing content, and that's just, that's just building permit, yeah.
It's actually just a building permit. Yeah, I didn't realize, Kevin informed me that the sign size for the county's required is smaller than ours, so they wouldn't need waivers, so, yeah.
Okay. For another night, so thank you. Any other questions, staff, on this? Any city attorney report? You sure?
Do we want to talk about the charter review committee, or do we want to punt that?
Yeah, you know, you really got to come back when you're prepared to talk about it. But I'd say you need to have a five-member committee, okay? And the big question is, how do they get appointed? And then I would like to see a facilitator hired, because the only reason is, I mean, I think Max could do a great job at it, because he did the thing before, but then you're going to get into the transparency thing and all that other kind of stuff. But, and I'd like to see five independent thinking with no, no, either way, you know what I'm saying? People maybe I don't even know beyond this committee.
Fine, find five independent-thinking people.
As long as we're in a, I think that facilitator, if we hire a facilitator, let's get them to do the appointment. I don't want any politics in this.
I don't want to keep putting it off.
I want to try and keep the politics out of it.
I agree with you, but we, we need to get through the budget cycle September, then October. I think we get the charter discussion started, okay?
Okay. So we'll, we'll worry about this.
Okay, so October will be our charter discussion, when we start that. So let's, let's plan on that, October.
So I think we need to get moving on it.
Okay.
And you all agree that you're going to sit down with Max on his contract?
We're going to look at that.
By September.
By September.
Well, I assume that the current contract will be sent to all of us, so, by email? I can take it...
Any extensions, yeah, so we can look at it.
I have one issue, and I talk about, if we have a little time, I'll take 10, five minutes.
You got 45.
It's come to my attention in the last month or so that the North County Airport is discussing with a tenant, a, a fuel farm to be located...
Yes.
On the, on 70-some-odd acres of the 200 acres that they have at North County Airport for commercial development. A fuel, yeah. Kevin, you probably know something about this too, I don't know if you do. But what I'm hearing is that they want to, they want to build a storage facility for gasoline and a distribution facility for that gasoline to be sent to all the gas stations. You don't know anything about it? Well, I, it's real, okay? In fact, before I went away, I learned about it. Bob Hodgson went to a meeting that I couldn't go to because he, I was away. And he, he gave me the stats today, and if they are correct, they're frightening.
About half a million gallons, I bet.
Yeah, it's more than half a million gallons. It's a half a million barrels. And there are 40 gallons in a barrel of a Monaco. It's not oil, it's gasoline.
Probably have to...
I don't know. It's being, it's being brought in by train, CSX tracks. I don't know where it's, where it's coming from. All I know is...
It's coming from Port, Port Everglades.
I don't know. All I know is that this is a proposal that the county is looking at with the airport authority and North County Airport. And you all know that there's an airport right there, there's a learning facility, there's a teaching facility there. There are inexperienced pilots doing touch-and-goes there all the time. It scares me. And I, I wanted to bring it to your attention. I think the city needs to investigate it and possibly take a position, although it's not in our jurisdiction.
We have an inter-local agreement, doesn't it?
Yeah, we do have an inter-local agreement, which, which, I don't know if it governs the commercial part of it.
I don't remember either, but the other thing is, that's why we were on to...
That's what I want, that's what I wanted your, you know, your direction on.
I'll look into it, find out if we, if we, if we have any input on that. I vaguely, I remember some of the terms of the agreement, but I'd rather look at it so I can speak, speak to you about it.
I want to just get more information about it before we go have Cockton doing so.
Could they possibly get that permit? It's in the middle of a wetlands area. You know, it's also, I tell you what...
Can you imagine what a fuel spill will do to that, to that...
Oh, West Palm Beach would be screaming about it, would go right in the grassy waters.
Right in the grassy waters, yeah.
Yeah, there's absolutely no way.
I know it's real, because I know that Commissioner, Commissioner Alashay had a meeting, which Bob Hodgson went to. Again, I was going to go, but I was away. And he gave me this information, and it's real, so we need to...
The spillage at Port Everglades, I don't know if you've seen, I've actually worked at the Port Everglades facility. The spillage there is incredible. I'm not, I'm just talking about daily average spillage.
You know, loading and unloading.
Yeah, there is a lot of spillage.
I understand, Port Everglades, they bring the oil in by the tankers. I can't, what are they going to do?
They'd have to pipe it.
And you're saying it's gasoline. That means it's refinedered. Where does it come? I don't...
It can't be, all right? No.
No, it's liquid.